Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is Thursday, February 3, at approximately 1:00. This is the regular meeting of the City Council, the Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the successor agency. If you will, please join me in a flag salute being led by Gabe Cotting, our Director of Marketing.
Thank you, Mayor. Please stand and begin.
May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Downs.
Present.
Councilmember Kite.
Here.
Councilmember Smotrich.
Here.
Mayor Protem Townsend.
Here.
Mayor Wile.
Here. We will now have non-agenda public comments. I may remind you that these are comments for a maximum of three minutes on subjects that are not on the agenda for today. If you're here to speak on one of the agenda items, you will be called upon at that time, and you should fill out a card in advance to let the city clerk know you desire to speak. At this time, for non-agenda public comments, I will ask the city clerk if she has any request.
I do not.
And do we have any remotely, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, we do. So if any member of the public would like to make a non-agenda public comment, now is the time to do so. If you're participating remotely, you would hit the raise hand button on Zoom or *9 on your telephone. Before we go to our remote audience, is there anyone here in person that didn't fill out a speaker card that wants to make a non-agenda public comment? All right, seen no one. Let's go to our remote audience. And Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name's Brad Anderson. I live within the city of Rancho Mirage, and I will keep you long. I just wanted to bring up two items, I believe. One is really transparency, and that's concerning the city's legal council. I have been unable to locate any information concerning any contract with that operation or with that entity, and I've never known it to come up for renewal or any request for proposals from outside firms. I can understand the city's very happy with that firm, but I think I've had issues, and I would think the city may be better served by definitely putting out requests for proposals from other firms that may be interested in serving the city. And moving on from transparency to the last meeting, I believe. Yeah, it was the last meeting. One of the city council members mentioned COVID. I'm going to bring up COVID and the COVID testing. And it appeared to me, because there was discussion about reinstating a visitor COVID testing site over the library, which I'm glad was not taken up or approved by this council. But my concerns are that one visitor could illustrate or demonstrate a city response that would cost the city money and just, you know, just for convenience. And that's what it appeared. I may be wrong on that, but I'm concerned. And the transparency aspect of that is my understanding of what I understood from the council member's comments was that himself and another council member approved this or brought this onto the agenda. Again, this is out of the public eye. I don't know how this is done, and if you could clarify that, that would be great. I understand that mainly the two council members should bring stuff up, and one council member should be able to put stuff on agenda without another brewer. But again, if this is not done in the public forum, when is it done? And I know other cities perform that in open session, and I think the city should too. And there was discussion, too, about health advice from council members concerning around COVID and face masks and stuff. And we do have a health officer, you know, the city has retained Riverside County for that aspect, and I think I brought that up before because we do have a hospital in the city. And I'm sure there are many doctors that would gladly take on that role for the city.
You have your three minutes. Please wrap up your comments.
We have a little. Thank you. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next speaker is Shan Dornheckler.
It's Shan Dornheckler. It would be nice if you actually read my name. To the City Council with regards to transparency and instructing staff to ensure that recommendations for any kind of zoning or rezoning of certain areas, particularly with regards to affordable housing or increasing a density of housing in areas such as Thunder Road, that the staff actually uses some of the million dollars that they've spent on audiovisual equipment and upgrading technology to reach out to the public, that they actually do reach out to the public and inform people within 500 feet of proposed rezoning ordinances to be engaged or at least notify, not pull something like bury the announcements and request for public comment and obscure publications, or not ensure that there can't be some kind of mail cards or put out. While I applaud that we are bringing in affordable housing to Rancho Mirage, the proposals that have currently been reviewed by staff did not engage any kind of stakeholders. It also did not, the density is unsustainable in the areas that they are proposing to add as part of the major plan that they're submitting to the state. And it is reprehensible that these proposals also do not include any pathways to homeownership for low and income people, and that you're essentially taking two places in the city of Rancho Mirage, relegating them as low and moderate income housing, and potentially building a future slum. And that is what I would like. It would be nice if you guys realized that you work for all residents, not just the wealthy country club set that you have that has elected you. You work for the people who live here. You work for the people who rent here. You work for all of us. And as such, it is responsibility of staff to engage with all residents in regards to making housing determinations or any kind of land usage.
Thank you for your comment. We have no more non-agenda public comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. We will now have a council board member comments. And Iris, I'll start with you if you have any comments.
Thank you, Ted. Yes, I do have a couple of comments because I wanted to draw some attention to an incredible organization called the Coachella Valley Disaster Preparedness Network, also known as CVDPN. It is a very special group that specializes in preparing citizens for emergencies, and they have some dynamic programs addressing safety training, education, and a wonderful system of networking opportunities. Their mission is to assist all Coachella Valley communities so they can be more cohesive, more self-sufficient, and most of all, to make sure that all of our citizens, no matter where they live, are prepared for natural disasters, which includes floods or fires or earthquakes, but also man-made emergencies, which can include chemical spills that can take place on our freeways with trucks transporting chemicals or on our rail system by the cars that are being transporting these chemicals. It's a great opportunity not only to address emergency preparedness for your own self, but also for your homeowner association and for your neighborhood. They help with establishing plans for your HOA or your neighborhood, and you can also work with them to see about enhancing the existing programs that you might have in your neighborhood or your HOA. It's a wonderful organization, and you can reach them if you're interested in making your own community safer. Jason, can you put up the next slide, please? They have two items that are coming up that you can tune into. One is Thursday, February 10, and the next is February 24. They're both on a Thursday. They're going to be held from 9:00 a.m. to noon. The CVDPN will host two free disaster planning academies for homeowners, associations, and communities to develop all kinds of new techniques and abilities to connect with other communities. So the sessions will take place, but you need to register, and the address is going to be at the Regional Access Project Foundation in the conference room located at 41550 Eclectic Street in Palm Desert. You can see that up on your screen. But also, when you do register, you need to contact Carla Sullivan-Dilly at carla So all questions about the training should be directed to Carla. She can answer all your questions and direct you on how to make your life safer and like make your safe, a safer life for your neighborhood and your HOA. Thanks so much. That's it.
Thank you, Iris. Charlie, do you have any comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do. Thank you. Rancho Mirage Resident Shred Day is set for Saturday, February 12, from 8:00 a.m. till noon, at the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory's West Parking Lot. We suggest protecting your identity and the environment by taking advantage of this free service. This event is free, as I said, to Rancho Mirage residents with proof of residency. For more information about acceptable items, COVID-19 restrictions, and other important details about this event, visit the city's website at ranchomaragecalifornia.gov. Let me also just add a few things to this, that their free event, no charge to shred, easy drive-up and drop-off, limited to six, 12-by-17-by-19 boxes. Acceptable items, which everybody wants to know, are tax documents, blank statements, legal papers, TVs, computers, printers, batteries for laptops, and that's a big plus here. Unacceptable items, paint, pesticides, automobile batteries, and light bulbs will not be accepted. So again, let me say it is Saturday, February 12, 2022, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory, 71100, Highway 111, West Parking Lot. No reservations are required. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Charlie. Richard, do you have any comments today?
I certainly do. Thank you, Mayor. And just want to remind everybody that upcoming Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory will host the LifeStream Blood Bank Blood and Drive, which will be on Wednesday, February 16. And the time for the blood drive will be from 9:00 o'clock in the morning till 2:00 in the afternoon. We certainly ask you all to come out and support your community and give the gift of life. If you're going to attend this event, we want to make sure that you drink plenty of fluids and bring your photo ID passport for proof of age. You can get more information on the website going to giftoflifestreaming.org to sign up in advance, and it's going to be at the Rancho Mirage Public Library Community Room located at 71100, Highway 111, Rancho Mirage. And again, that date is Wednesday, February 16, at 9:00 a.m. till 2:00 in the afternoon. Tremendous need for blood these days with all the disasters that are occurring. If you can give a little blood, it would certainly go a long way for all of our community and the outside communities. Thank you, Ted.
Certainly worthwhile. And of course, there is a office in the Rancho Las Palmas Shopping Center as well. Steve?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jason, if we get to slide number one. So it's important for a newly appointed council member to learn everything possible about city operation and city finances and revenues. And so I recently had an opportunity to review the city's marketing master plan. I wanted to share a couple of things that were important to me, and I think important to everyone in Rancho Mirage. Slide number two, Jason, if you would. So tourism is extremely important to the quality of life here in Rancho Mirage, and it's important for the image that we all have of our own city. It's important to note here the transient occupancy tax, important issue that I learned in the last couple of weeks, also known as the hotel bed tax, represents about 31% of the city's annual operating budget of roughly $29 million. So about $9 million, a little more than that, comes from transient occupancy tax from our hotel partners, and it's important for us to make sure that they're as healthy as possible. So I was happy to see that marketing is working with our resorts, and it's a major focus of our marketing master plan for the upcoming years. And this slide gives you an idea as to what the marketing plan will look like in the coming years in our partnership with our hotel, with our major hotel operators. If we go on to slide number four. So one area that we're actively working on is with Visit Greater Palm Springs. And each year, Visit Greater Palm Springs launches a popular summer chill television co-op advertising package that includes custom-produced 30-second spots that feature our resort partners. And in 2021, the Summer Chill Co-op resulted in 53,000 television spots, over $3 billion media impressions, for a total media buy value of about $660,000 for our three sponsored resorts. And then if we go on to slide number five. City of Rancho Mirage once again plans to sponsor with the Western Rancho Mirage, with the Omni, and with the Ritz Carlton in this advertising campaign. And so again, this gives you an idea of what the advertising campaign will look like, and please note the "Imagine a Place" tagline that will be part of this advertising campaign. And let's go to the last slide. So the types of partnerships are key to ensuring our resorts are well-positioned in the travel marketplace, especially as the city looks to welcome Sensei Porcupine Creek in 2022 and future resort hotels as part of Section 31 development. And this visual simulation here gives you an idea as to what the Crystal Lagoon and the beach area and the hotels might look like in Section 31 when complete. And the last thing that I think it's important for me to mention is I'm honored to have been appointed to serve the balance of the term of Dana Hobart. And as I learn more and more about the operation of this city and more and more about Dana Hobart's imprint on this city, it becomes apparent how important he was to this city over the last 20 years. Focus, if you will, on the lower left-hand portion of the screen, and you see the Rancho Mirage Tourism logo, the stylized RM, and the heart of Palm Springs Valley. "The Heart of the Palm Springs Valley" is a phrase that was championed by Dana Hobart. Thank you, Dana, for your many years of great service to this city, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Steve. Steve has certainly jumped into the position on the city council with both feet. He's obviously studying to get up to speed. He already had a great background before joining the council, having spent many years working in Rancho Mirage. And nice of you to mention Dana, and indeed, he does deserve that credit. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Nice of you to say that. I'd like to make a couple of comments myself. On Saturday, February 5, the city of Rancho Mirage invites all Rancho Mirage residents to a day at Palm Springs Power Baseball. Admission into the game is free for Rancho Mirage residents with proof of residency and their families with up to four children per adult. Proof of residence can be a driver's license, ID card, utility bill showing a Rancho Mirage address. Attendees will receive a complimentary hot dog, a bag of chips, soda or water, and a special gift to take home while supplies last. So if you have four children and a couple of adults, that's six hot dogs, some chips, some water, some soda, that should be able to hold you through the game. You have two games to choose from or stay for both. At 10:00 a.m., watch the Alberta Grizzly and the British Columbia Bombers swing away for the win. Then at 12:30, the Palm Springs Chill battles it out with the Palm Springs Power. And by the way, if any of you have gone down to some of the ballgames, we're not talking about a very amateurish group. This is high-level baseball done extremely well and played very professionally. Palm Springs Stadium is located at 1901 East Baristo Road in Palm Springs. For more exciting Palm Springs Power news, visit their website at palmspringspowerbaseball.com. What an exciting Saturday. We hope you all come out to enjoy the day of all-American fun. And you know, I can't think of a better way to spend a Saturday with your family than at America's Pastime Baseball. With all that's going on in the world, with a great deal of angst, international and national tensions, boy, is this a great relief. Any psychiatrist in the world would probably say, get on down to the baseball game on Saturday, enjoy it, and that would be the very best therapy that we could all endeavor. So good luck.
Ted, are you going to throw out the first ball?
You know, I wish I could. I was planning on it, but I have another engagement that morning, but I will be there in spirit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Look forward.
Absolutely. In any case, that concludes our council board member comments, and I'll ask the city manager for his comments.
None today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I will ask if there are any changes or additions, corrections, to the minutes of January 2022. If there are none, I will ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion, and I hear a second, if you would. Christie, roll call.
Councilmember Downs?
Approved.
Councilmember Kite?
Approved.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Approved.
Mayor Protem Townsend?
Approved.
Mayor Wile?
Approved.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We'll now go to the consent calendar, which will be presented by our city manager, Isaiah Hagerman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council? You have seven items on your consent calendar for consideration. Item number one is final acceptance of the citywide rubberized emulsion aggregate slurry, known as REAS Project, CP 21-366. Item number two is extension of completion date for track map number 34435. Item number three is second extension of completion date for track map number 36809-3. Item number four is the third extension of completion date for track map number 36809-2. Item number five is to receive and file the December 31, 2021 Quarterly Treasurer's Report. Item number six are contracts, and item number seven are demands. And before we go to the council, if any member of the public wishes to speak on one of the seven items, now is the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would use the raise hand button on Zoom or *9 on your telephone. Christie, do we have any speaker cards?
No, we do not.
Anyone here in the audience wish to speak on one of the consent calendar items? Okay, we'll go to our remote audience, and Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Hello, Brad Anderson, City of Mass Morage, and hopefully you do not disconnect me again like you did before, probably unuser, meaning it's happened before. But anyway, I would like to speak on consent item number four. This is the third extension. The only reason I'm bringing that up is because I was asked from community members why this is taking place. And of course, my research shows that it's an inside track, meaning such extensions are not that uncommon. I would recommend that you give extensions like you do to the Betty Ford Center, and that mean no extensions, I mean in a long completion date. You know, I'm against this because this is just an ongoing project, and it should be performed in a timely manner. I wouldn't be able to get away with anything like that, and I have it in the past. So I would suggest that you just operate under the same code that everybody has to live under, and that's all I have. Hey, thanks.
Thank you for your comment. We have no other speakers, Mr. Mayor, so I'll return this to you and the council.
All right. Thank you, Isaiah. Are there any comments by my colleagues on the dais? Seeing none, Iris has none. If there are no comments, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
There is a motion and a second. Roll call, Christie, please.
Councilmember Downs?
Approved.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an update on the city's compliance with Senate Bill 1383 and its impacts on BRTech trash and recycling services. That will be presented by Jessica Pulliam, our senior management analyst. Jessica, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm really excited to be able to be here in front of you all today and to provide you an update on Senate Bill 1383 to provide what is required of the city and where we are currently at in the process to be compliant with this new regulation. To briefly recap, Senate Bill 1383 is the most significant waste reduction mandate to be adopted by the state of California in the last 30 years. It establishes several statewide goals for the diversion of organic waste from landfills. It was signed into law in 2016, and it requires the state to reduce organic waste, such as food waste, green waste, paper products, from disposal by 75% in 2025, which is more than 20 million tons annually. This Senate bill is a very aggressive organic waste reduction with high targets. Regulations are taking effect this year, as well as a requirement to increase edible food recovery by 20% by 2025. This has significant policy and legal implications for the state and for all local governments. Some of the key areas of responsibility for 2022 include providing organic collection, establishing an edible food recovery program, conducting education and outreach, procuring recovered organic products, securing access to recycling and edible food recovery capacity, monitoring compliance, and conducting enforcement. I will now provide details on each of these requirements, including where the city is currently at and the next steps that will be needed. One of the first items is to provide organic waste recycling services to all residents and businesses. Since 2004, the city has provided organic waste recycling to businesses. The expansion of services to include residential requires many infrastructure updates to include facilities, service vehicles, new carts, among other items, and requires an update to the scope of services with our partner BRTech. and requires an update to the scope of services with our partner BRTech. We are currently in the final negotiation stages of this scope of services for a new BRTech contract, and staff anticipates presenting this to council in early March. I will provide a comprehensive timeline on this item later in the update, but I anticipate being fully compliant with this particular item by the end of 2022. Another item is we must establish an edible food recovery program that recovers edible food from the waste stream. With Senate Bill 1383 regulations, the edible food recovery program is required to be implemented, and it requires coordination efforts between the city, BRTech, edible food generators, food recovery organizations, the health department, and delivery services. Specifically, by 2022, the city is required to have what the state is calling Tier 1 generators, which includes grocery stores over 10,000 square feet in size, wholesale vendors, and food distributors to donate edible food, to have contracts in place with the nonprofits receiving that food, and to assure they are keeping records for inspection with annual reporting on the established contracts, types of food, and total pounds donated to the city. In December of 2021, city staff notified all our Tier 1 generators of their requirements by way of a mailed letter. The city website has also been updated with these requirements, and as of now, the city is in full compliance with this item. By January of 2024, the city will be required to expand the program and oversight to include Tier 2 generators. This includes restaurants that are over 5,000 square feet or 250 seats, hotels, education agencies, and health facilities. The edible food recovery program includes outreach, education, oversight of generators, as well as annual reporting from the city to include the total pounds of food recovered to the county and then to the state. Once this program is fully implemented to include Tier 2 generators, this will be a significant program to oversee. City staff is currently looking into a potential partnership with Fine Food Bank to implement the education outreach and logistics that are required of this program. Staff will be finalizing these discussions and plans to bring this item to council very soon. The city must conduct annual education and outreach to all businesses and residents regarding collection service requirements, contamination standards, self-haul requirements, and to commercial edible food generators, the donation requirements, as well as a list of available food recovery organizations, as well as general information about the overall compliance with 1383. Staff is continuing to work with our partner BRTech on a comprehensive outreach and education plan that will fulfill these requirements as part of our new contract. An additional requirement is procurement. Beginning in January 1st of 2022, each city will now have an annual procurement target, which establishes the minimum quantity of recovered organic waste products a jurisdiction is required to procure annually. The procurement target is based on population size, and the portfolio of products we can procure to meet our target can include any combination of compost, mulch, biomass-derived electricity, or renewable gas from anaerobic digestion. For example, if our city were to meet its 2022 procurement requirement using compost, we would be required to procure approximately 1,090 tons, and the estimated cost for this purchase is around $16,000. However, the regulations require procurement, and it does not necessarily mean purchase or use of this product. The regulations state the city may purchase, may cause to be purchased, or otherwise acquire products and may use these products in a way that best fits local needs. City staff is currently exploring local need, including at city facilities, as well as looking to other options with our partner BRTech on other means of marketing our procurement requirement to reduce these costs to the city. Additionally, the city of Rancho Mirage is required to ensure all vendors provide recycled content paper, recycled content printing and writing paper that consists of at least 30% by fiber weight post-consumer fiber instead of non-recycled products. The city of Rancho Mirage already purchases recycled content paper products, and my city council has already passed an environmentally preferable purchasing and practice policy by Resolution 2020-42 in December of 2020. Staff anticipates presenting a more detailed proposed policy with specific callouts to recycle content as required by SB 1383 to council soon. I anticipate no issues in fulfilling our 2022 procurement requirements. The next item is each jurisdiction must plan for adequate capacity for readiness and capacity to implement SB 1383 to include organic collection, recycling, and edible food recovery capacity. Senate Bill 1383 requires the counties to take the lead in collaborating with the cities located within them for planning the necessary organic waste recycling and food recovery capacity needed to divert organic waste from landfills into recycling activities and to food recovery organizations. The city is required to work with and report to the county, and the county is required to report to the state. While reporting is not required to start until August of 2022, it is anticipated that we will begin this collaborative effort soon. The city will be responsible for the following: estimating organic waste disposal within the city; identifying the amount of existing capacity located in both the county and outside the county that is verifiably available; estimating the amount of new or expanded capacity that will be needed; consulting with various entities throughout the planning process; and submitting an implementation schedule to CalRecycle if we do find we lack capacity. Staff will continue to work with BRTech and our consultant economics as we move through this capacity planning process. By January 1st of 2022, jurisdictions are required to have an enforcement mechanism or ordinance in place. In November of 2021, the city of Rancho Mirage approved an ordinance which included the required SB 1383 regulations and adopted an enforcement ordinance. As such, to date, we are currently in full compliance with this item. Staff is working with BRTech as part of the new scope of services to develop compliance monitoring, education, and the process by which the city will provide a notice of violation and impose penalties as required by Senate Bill 1383 starting in 2004. Staff anticipates maintaining compliance on this item. Our city will have to maintain all information in an implementation record. This graphic is a snapshot of the items to be kept in the implementation record. Each section requires a minimum level of record-keeping, such as ordinances, contracts, and franchise agreements. CalRecycle reviews this implementation record as part of compliance evaluation. The record will need to be stored in one central location and be accessible to CalRecycle staff within 10 business days and retained for five years. City staff anticipates maintaining compliance in these items. Additionally, the trash and recycling pages on the city website have been updated with more details on the current services as well as what is expected upon moving to the new three-cart system. Today, right here in front of me, we also have a set of samples of the 35-gallon carts here, as well as one 65-gallon to show the council and the public what these carts are expected to look like. There is the new green organics cart. Recycling will be moved to a blue cart, and trash will be in a gray cart. It is anticipated in the new contract that all of our residents would have the standardized three carts in the 35-gallon sizes. If a resident needed additional recycling or trash, they could opt to a 65-gallon, which is here on my far right or from the camera on the left, sized cart at no additional cost. Any additional cost beyond that would be at an additional fee. The specifics on the details on the transition, the cart sizes, rates, educational outreach are in the final stages of discussion and are anticipated to be brought in detail to council next month. At this point, I'd like to play a short video for council now that we have made with the help of BRTech and our consultant economics to provide some generalized information on what residents can expect during the cart transition.
Did you know that organic waste is anything made from plants or animals, including food scraps and yard waste? When organic material gets buried in our landfills, this gases into our atmosphere as it decomposes. But organic waste doesn't have to go into our landfills. It can be composted. Recycling organic material is good for the planet, but it's also the law. All cities in California are required to provide residents with the ability to recycle their yard waste and food scraps. The city of Rancho Mirage and its exclusive hauler BRTech are working together to provide residents with new trash, recycling, and organics carts that comply with the state's standardized colors. You will be delivered new carts. You'll receive a green cart for organics and a blue cart for recycling. Your current gray cart will be converted to your trash cart with a new lid or updated labeling. Once you have your new carts, you can choose to keep your old trash container for personal use, or you may mark them for BRTech to remove. If you choose to repurpose your old trash container, make sure to store them separately from your trash enclosure as they are no longer part of curbside trash service. Will your scheduled pickup days change? No, your current frequency and days of service will remain the same. Your trash will continue to be picked up twice a week. On one of the trash days, your organics will get picked up. On the other trash day, your recycling will be picked up. When you see only one truck picking up both waste streams, don't worry. These trucks have a split body, which means they're specifically designed to hold both types of waste. Since 2004, the city of Rancho Mirage has been collecting food waste from businesses. Now residents will be able to participate while keeping their food scraps and yard waste out of the landfill. Once you receive your green cart, you can start putting yard waste and food scraps in right away. From your yard, you can place yard waste, such as grass clippings, leaves, branches, and wood waste into your green cart. From your kitchen, you can place anything that is food waste. If it grows, it goes. This includes fruit and vegetable trimmings, eggshells, tea bags and coffee grounds, leftover food, spoiled food, cooked meat, bread, and even food soil paper, such as napkins and paper towels. When your new three-cart system is delivered, you will also receive a kitchen pail to collect your food waste. When your pail is full, empty it into your green organics cart outside. To help keep it clean, you can line it with a paper bag. Please note, pet waste and kitty litter must go into the trash. Non-organic items are not accepted in your green cart, including plastic food wrap, cigarette butts or ashes, styrofoam, diapers, or any bathroom waste. Minimize odors by making sure to drain excess liquids before putting your food waste into the kitchen pail. You may find it helpful to store food scraps inside the fridge or freezer until collection day. Wash your kitchen pail with soapy water or place it into the dishwasher. In general, try to reduce food waste by only buying what you need, creating new meals from leftovers, and storing your food correctly. If you have excess non-perishable food, please donate to a local food pantry. Your organic waste gets taken to a local composting facility where it gets composted and is used as a soil amendment to grow healthy plants. Remember, hazardous waste such as batteries, light bulbs, paint, chemicals, sharps, electronic waste, and other such materials do not belong in any of your containers. You can contact BRTech Customer Service to schedule a pickup of your household hazardous waste or to find the nearest drop-off location. For more information, please check out the city's website. Thank you for doing your part to make the organics recycling program a success.
Great film. Really good.
Thank you. Well, there is a lot of moving parts to meeting Senate Bill 1383. Staff is confident that the city of Rancho Mirage will be able to set an example for meeting all requirements. Before we move to any questions, I would like to go over a timeline of what is expected to happen next. In March of 2020, staff will present a proposed policy for council approval that has specific callouts to recycle content as required by SB 1383 to meet procurement requirements. It is anticipated that contract negotiations will be finalized, and staff plans to present a new BRTech contract to council with updated scope of services, including the new three-cart residential system. Senate Bill 1383 required outreach, education, and reporting requirements. Additionally, staff will begin to coordinate with the county for capacity planning efforts mentioned previously and anticipates being completed by the end of 2022. Staff will also present an edible food recovery program to council that encompasses Tier 1 generators within the next three months and a proposal to expand the program to include Tier 2 generators by 2023 to meet the 2024 compliance. And in fall of 2022, staff will finalize the options for the city's requirement to procure recovered organic waste, such as mulch or compost. If the BRTech contract presented next month is approved, it is anticipated to have a new contract start date in April with new rates effective in July. Within 45 days of contract approval, the new bin rollout phases and the schedule of delivery will be posted to the city website. This feature will include the ability for residents to put in their address and be provided their delivery phase so they will know when to expect to be moved to the new three-cart system. Within 60 days, the city BRTech CARC Transition Plan and Educational Outreach Plan will be finalized, and this plan will include HOA meetings, visual and instructional handout materials, and online tools. And within 90 days, education and outreach are expected to begin. By the end of 2022, all residents will be transitioned to the new three-cart system. This concludes my update, and I'd be happy to address any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. There's no action associated with this item. This was just a report and informational item. But before we go to the council, if any member of the public would like to speak on this item, now is the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you can use the raise hand button or star nine on your telephone. Christie, do we have any speaker cards?
No, we do not.
Okay, is there anyone here in person that wishes to speak on this item? All right, we'll go to our remote audience. I'm not seeing anyone on our remote audience, so we'll close the public comment period, and I'll turn this over to you, Mr. Mayor and the council.
All right, thank you, Isaiah. As Isaiah said, this does not require a vote of any kind. This is for informational purposes only. Steve, do you have any comments on this?
I'm curious as to what implementation might do to monthly trash bills from BRTech for citizens of the city. So, Isaiah, do we know about that?
Yeah, so, you know, we're adding a whole new trash collection which required new trash trucks, additional bodies. And so the costs to implement 1383 are pretty significant. They're like 30% on the trash bill. Obviously, you know, doing a one-time rate increase of 30% wasn't feasible. And so we've been working with BRTech to try to find ways to lower the cost for our ratepayers. And so that's part of why we're transitioning some of the bins. So the gray recycle bin now is being transitioned to your new trash bin with just a new lid and maybe some new labels. That was meant to save some money for ratepayers. So I think we're in the realm of about a 5% increase is what we're projecting for this next round. But that 5% increase will probably continue for four or five years until the rate covers the cost of the program. So we did implement like a phase-in schedule so that there wasn't this big rate shock to our community.
Okay. And then the edible food recovery program, there were two tiers. Roughly, how many businesses in the city must comply with the two different tiers of the edible food recovery program?
We have approximately five Tier 1 generators and then over 50 Tier 2.
And are most of them restaurants? I assume they're restaurants and...
Yes, most of them are restaurants.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Yes, Richard?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a question on the public involvement in the program. What kind of public outpouring are we gonna have to inform them what's going on?
Yeah, so obviously, this is the biggest change to trash since recycling. So there will be a full court press. There will be direct mailings to customers. You know, the video that we showed today will obviously be utilized. There will be city e-blasts. There will be city e-blasts. Residents will have the ability to go to the website, get the information they need. They can put in their address and see when those bins are coming. So between our partner with BRTech, who's doing a lot of the direct mailing, and then just like we have now, you know, if somebody comes in and wants some material on what can go in my recycle bin, we're going to have all that same collateral for the new organics bin as well. So a lot of the avenues that we use now for recycling, and we did use for recycling when it was new, those are going to be used again. But it will be a full effort by BRTech. Every customer will get direct mailings, and then there, between the city and BRTech, every customer will be notified.
Will we have the ability to do a public meeting?
Yeah, so absolutely. We anticipate, you know, doing town halls and things of that nature, right? So anytime we've kind of done something big, when we started the Energy Authority or things like that, you know, we're going to be following, you know, the public outreach campaign that we typically do that will encompass meetings and mailers and pretty much everything we can think of to get people's attention.
One last question. Are the other cities adjacent to us are involved in the same kind of program?
Yeah. So this is a state mandate, so it impacts every city. And part of the reason why we have new bins is there's a state-mandated color scheme. So eventually, every community in California will have the same color scheme that we do.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Charlie, any questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One question is, will this be in Rancho Mirage rolled out by neighborhood or bang everybody in Rancho Mirage at one time? And also, the reference to, what was that? Would you clarify the August date that you're talking about? What does that mean? And I think that is about it. Everybody else has done a good job of asking.
So it'll definitely not be all at once. So there will be a phase-in schedule, and that's just due to the makeup of how some of our communities operate. So some of our gated communities on the BRTech side are one bill, and then the HOA bills all their members. So it's not the same approach for every type of community. Also, we just don't have the capa- the capacity to do our whole community in one day. And so there will be sections of our community, which is kind of the purpose of the phase-in schedule, so people can go and say, okay. And, you know, we'll have visuals, we'll have a place on the website where they can go and look up when they're scheduled to get their bins.
Very good. And the question of August, what did that refer to? And going back to Richard's question, is that when this is all going to start, where we're going to have meetings and a big blitz on what's going to happen?
Yeah, so the next steps, the next big milestone is getting the BRTech contract approved by the city council. So that'll happen in March or April. And then once that contract is approved, then that will enable BRTech and the city to finalize everything else we need to do as far as notification, right? So even though we're ready, the community's not, right? So the next big step is get the contract approved, and then recognizing that we have until the end of this year to roll this out to our whole community, that's why we're going with a phased-in approach and saying, there's going to be, you know, months of notification of here's what's happening and here's when it's coming, and then it'll actually happen. So that period between contract approval and when they actually get their bins, that's going to be the period that we do this public outreach campaign.
Very good. And then when all this hits and there's 1,000 questions, are they calling City Hall or are they calling BRTech?
Yeah, it doesn't matter. So just like now, sometimes people call us, and if we can't field the question or if it's something that BRTech needs to handle, we provide them the BRTech number. But if it's just a question on what's going on, BRTech is just as prepared as us to answer those questions for our community.
Very good. And the last question, last question. The increase in costs, are the delivery bins, are they also the trucks? It seemed to me like looking at the little skit, that there's a lot of new trucks there, buddy, right?
Yeah, so it's everything, right? It's the bodies that run this additional trash service. It's the infrastructure, so the bins, the new trash trucks that are the dual bins, and the rear loaders now versus what we have now are some of the over-the-top where they load it in the front of the vehicle and then throw it over the top. Obviously, when you're talking about equipment and infrastructure, the cost of that is phased in, recouped over many years, right? So those trucks have a, you know, a five-to-10-year useful life. So you're going to phase in the cost of that over that period of time.
Very good. And this is valley-wide. It's just not us. And one more last question. I'm very well-known for my last question, so that's what we're laughing about. If somebody doesn't want this, can they opt out of it?
No.
You're not opting out of this, anybody, so this is it.
It's a state, man. It's a state law, right? So, and the city is obviously in the law, in the position to do this, or else there are severe penalties to the city. And so BRTech is our provider, and so we take the regulations that come from the state, and then we work with BRTech, the provider, to implement those regulations within our community. Now, you know, there's some nuances to 1383 with some obligations that are directly on the city as far as procuring this material and things like that. Those things will be handled, you know, with the city and BRTech when necessary. But, you know, from a residential perspective, you're going to get a green bin. Now, nobody's going to be standing there looking at your bin whether it's full or empty. You know, we hope that people will, just like with recycling, there was some resistance to recycling when that first started, but I think now, you know, we're very accustomed to separating our trash and putting things in recycle. So eventually, hopefully, it's just like recycling, only organic recycling.
Very good. It's a great program and a great improvement of what we're trying to do with the environment. So, thank you.
Charlie, you better not put your stuff out by my house, you know.
Richard, I would dream of it.
Yeah.
Okay, Isaiah, I have, I have two questions.
Sure, go ahead.
This is Iris. Okay. I noticed on one of the slides, there was a very large structure. Wanted to find out, number one, who is going to be building those structures? Will, will we have a separate assessment on our taxes? Or will this be built by the state or by the counties? And also regarding the mulching centers. I know mulching can sometimes be a little bit fragrant, so do we know where these mulching centers are going to be located so that we will not be downwind of any of these fragrances?
Yeah, so there's, there's no planned facilities in Rancho Mirage as a result of this. I think some of the infrastructure that we talked about in the report was, BRTech already has existing facilities for composting, and this state law's been on the books now for several years. And so all of our trash providers and facilities that take this organic waste, they've all been ramping up to meet the demand. And so, you know, in our area, BRTech has assured us that they have the facilities necessary to handle the material that they're going to get from our community. And so, you know, there may be some trash providers or areas in the state that maybe have to go build additional facilities, but right now, we're being told by BRTech that they have the existing facilities to handle the material that's coming from our community.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah. And, you know, there's obviously going to be questions and, you know, in any, whether you mail somebody, you know, a letter or things like that, there's always going to be people that maybe missed it or are seasonal. And, you know, one thing about our community is our, our BRTech personnel are great, right? So, you know, they're there, they're going to know what's going on, and that's likely who a resident's going to interface with, you know, when they're getting their new bins. If, you know, they missed the public outreach campaign, or they're not quite sure what to do with the old bins, you know, our, our trash provider does a great job with its customer service, and all their staff is going to be trained on how to respond to, you know, simple inquiries of what do I do with my existing trash can now that my recycle gets transitioned to trash? So there's going to be ways to market where you can just throw it away, or you can keep it and do whatever you want with it. It's just BRTech won't pick it up anymore, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions of any kind? Jessica, very, very excellent explanation. I thought the video was very well-done. And obviously, you're going to be coming back again, probably more than once, to not only this council but to a number of public forums, so. And I can tell you this, that I've had friends from other cities that have asked me about the, the change, the increase in fees, whether our city is subject to the BRTech increase and what we anticipate. So the point is that this is city-wide, this is valley-wide. We're all going to be subjected to it. So we'll make the adjustment and we'll go from there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think right now, the residents of Rancho Mirage would agree that our trash pickup is the best and has the best collectors, and hopefully, the new program will be just as good or better.
I'm sure you're right, Richard. We're all, you're, you're correct. We're very, very satisfied, and they've been doing an excellent job for a number of years.
Right. And I would just like to take a second to thank Jessica for all of her work on this. There's many, you know, there's a lot of nuances and detail to these regulations and many different aspects beyond just residents getting a new organics bin, but Jessica's been doing a great job in working with BRTech to make sure the city complies with state law. So thank you, Jessica.
All right. If there are no other questions, we will conclude this matter. Thank you, Jessica. The next item will be the Resolution Number 2022, next in order, amending the general plan to update both the housing and safety element, case number GPT-A21-001, and certify and adopt the negative declaration case number EA21-0005. That's going to be handled by Jeremy Glym, our Director of Development Services. If you would, Jeremy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, council. For your consideration today is the housing and safety element update to the general plan. Before we get started, just like to thank Nicole Christ from Terra Nova Planning and Research. She's been our consultant on this project. And also the planning manager, Mina Dukic, and our housing manager, Marcus Alimon. Between the three of them and Nicole's team, they've done all the heavy lifting on this project, so just wanted to thank them. So getting into it, a little bit of background for you. So what is a housing element? Every city and county in California is required to adopt a general plan, which serves as a visioning document for the development of that city or county. So in basic terms, a general plan is essentially a blueprint for citywide or countywide development. A general plan is made up of elements, and there are seven elements that must be included in every single general plan, one of those being a housing element. The purpose of the housing element is to provide both citizens and public officials with a comprehensive understanding of the housing needs within a city. And as you'll learn later in this presentation, housing needs are established by the state and distributed on a prescribed schedule by regional planning agencies. Again, as with all elements of the general plan, the housing element applies to the entire city. Update requirements. The housing element is the only general plan element that requires updating on a regular basis, commonly referred to as a housing cycle. Housing cycles last eight years. Not all cities and counties in California are on the same exact cycle, but the eight-year cycle is a statewide standard. The current housing cycle in the SCAG region, known as the fifth cycle, was effective from 2013 to 2021, and the new cycle, referred to as the sixth cycle, will be effective until 2029. So what is RENA? At the center of the update process is the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, otherwise known as RENA. The RENA number is generated by the Southern California Association of Governments, or SCAG, which is the agency responsible for developing housing needs allocations for all counties and cities in their jurisdiction. It is important to note that SCAG does not come up with the overarching housing unit requirement on its own. The state assigns a broad number to responsible agencies, who are then required to disperse them throughout their regions. So for this update, the SCAG region was assigned 1.3 million housing units across four income categories. And of those 1.3 million units assigned to the entire SCAG region, Rancho Mirage was assigned 1,741 units. And of those units, 1,073 are required for moderate and lower-income households. As required by state law, the housing element must identify an inventory of sites that can accommodate housing development for all income levels. So these next few slides identify the areas of the city where housing development can occur and lands that have a reasonable potential for development. The lands identified in this inventory comprise a combination of city-owned lands, existing high-density residential zoned lands, and certain mixed-use lands that could accommodate higher densities of development. Again, we are required by the state to identify specific sites as part of the inventory obligation, and the state does review the sites to make sure they have a realistic potential for development. And in addition, they also review the dispersion of sites throughout the city because they do not want all projects or all potential affordable income projects located in one area of a city or county. So this slide identifies lands in the northern portion of the city, including the city-owned property identified as Site B on this map, which is near the Rancho Mirage Dog Park. This slide identifies sites along the western portion of the Highway 111 corridor, including the city-owned property identified as Site D on this map. Site D is the location of the former Rancho Palms Mobile Home Park, which is now vacant. This slide identifies sites along the eastern portion of Highway 111, and the majority of these would be potentially in a mixed-use zone. The updated housing element identifies a total capacity of 2,322 units, which is more than the 1,741 that were assigned us. And the reason for doing this is to provide flexibility in development, and it's prudent that we, we identify more than what's necessary so that as things develop in the future, we have some flexibility as to how other sites can develop. Just real briefly here, there have been a number of changes to state law regarding housing during this previous cycle, and some of the most visible changes have to do with local land use controls. And as a result of various bills that were adopted at the state level, local jurisdictions have been forced to give up some of their discretion as it relates to housing development. One example of this is Senate Bill 330, which was passed in 2019. So a couple things that SB 330 does is it freezes the ability of local governments to downzone, adopt new development standards, or change land use in residential areas if that change results in less intensive uses. So more simply stated, if it creates less opportunity for housing development, you can't do it. It also allows developers to request approval of housing developments that exceed density and design controls of the underlying zone if the existing zone is in conflict with a general plan or specific plan. So basically, if zoning requirements are more restrictive than general or specific plan standards, then they can be ignored. And these are just a couple examples of the state taking control of local development. But the basic theme is that they're trying to do everything in their power to eliminate hurdles for any type of housing development. Another thing that has come up in this cycle is decertification of housing element, and while the state has always had the authority to decertify someone's housing element, it's been made clear that this is something that they're going to pursue. So the state now has more authority to do that, and if they find that a city or county is not making progress toward their RENA allocations, they can come in and take over that city's or county's housing element. And by default, they then become the responsible agency in charge of the element. And that would give them the full authority over zoning, entitlement and processing requirements, and development standards. So worst-case scenario, if this were to happen, the state could implement ministerial approval or staff-level approval of large housing developments with absolutely no public hearings. And that would effectively remove all local, local control of housing development. So an affordable over, an affordable housing overlay zone has been recommended for deployment over select properties in areas of the city, including city-owned lands. And an overlay zone does not require affordable housing development, rather it provides more opportunities through design and development standards. So that's the reason for the overlay zone. As part of this update cycle, we were also required to review the safety element of the general plan for compliance with recently adopted state laws. Updates to the safety element were minimal and focused primarily on updates to fire safety programs that meet new state laws. safety programs that meet new state laws. The Board of Forestry and Fire Protection formally reviewed our updates, and so it is ready for adoption. So, next steps in this process would be to submit the element to the state for official certification and then promptly begin work on implementation of the plan. It is critical that we begin the subsequent work sooner than later, because as part of this update cycle, we were required to put hard dates or assign hard dates to our goals and policies, and we have to report those things in our annual updates to the state. So, it is important that we start moving on those things sooner than later. Staff received many numerous public comments on this project in opposition of the project, specifically regarding the introduction of the affordable housing overlay on the former Mobile Home Park along Peterson Road, which is now vacant. The overlay would allow densities of up to 28 dwelling units per acre, which all of the commenters are opposed to. Again, this is a city-owned property. So, some background on the densities. The state has determined that the base density to accommodate affordable housing or promote affordable housing in our region should be a minimum of 30 dwelling units per acre. Over months of dialogue with the state, we were able to prove that we could accommodate our RENA numbers by implementing this overlay zone, as opposed to simply changing the density across the board over the entire city in the high-density zone to 30 dwelling units per acre. So, it's important that we don't lower the densities here, because it would prevent us from meeting our RENA numbers and would also open us up to the state coming back and imposing that 30 dwelling unit per acre minimum across all high-density zones in our city, including this site. And you'll notice that we've proposed the highest densities on the city-owned properties because the city has ultimate control over what gets built there. The development of each of these individual sites will be reviewed on a case-by-case basis, which will include the applicable environmental review. And again, it is important to show these densities in order to meet our RENA allocation and satisfy government code requirements to achieve certification of the housing element. And lastly, before reading the Planning Commission's recommendation, I would just like to note that this project was noticed in accordance with government code. It was noticed in the desert sun on four separate occasions, the first time being in January of 2021. We held four separate public meetings for this project, and in addition to that, there were multiple e-blasts. The project's been on the city's website, so there's been a significant amount of outreach over the last more than a year on this project. So, with that, the Planning Commission does recommend that the City Council adopt Resolution Next in Line, amending the general plan to update both the housing and safety elements. That concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Mr. Mayor, we're going to designate Mike Fontana as a community spokesperson. So, if any speaker wishes to delegate their speaking time to Mike Fontana, what I need you to do is, if you're here in person, come up and state your name for the record and that you're giving your time to Mike Fontana. If you're on Zoom and you want to give your time to Mike Fontana, just raise your hand, and when it's your turn to speak, state your name for the record and that you're delegating your time to Mike Fontana. And then, Mike, I'll have you speak last. So, once all the speakers have gone through, then we'll call you up for your presentation. So, at this point, we will open up the public testimony portion of this public hearing. So, again, if any member of the public wishes to speak on this item, now is the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would use the raise hand button or star nine on your telephone. And again, that includes people that wish to delegate their time to Mike Fontana. Please come forward during the public comment period, state your name for the record, and that you're giving your time to Mike Fontana, and Mike will be last. And so, Kristi, I'll have you do the speaker cards first, please.
Okay, so, we have Jim Walker.
And it is a Bitcoin shirt. Hello, thank you for your time. Jeremy, I want to say thank you, very educational and enlightening on what you've been telling us. I was on the last Zoom call as well. I am a resident there in close proximity to the Mobile Home Park. That I have to say thank you all for fixing the problem that we once had there. It seems perplexing to me that we're going to be bringing back a possible problem again. I noticed how much money the city spent to fix that problem. It's nice to not have helicopters and police cars, graffiti, and a lot of crime. Removing that park was the right decision, hard to speak in a mask here, but it certainly helped our neighborhood. Rancho Mirage speaks for itself. You guys are always doing the right thing. You've made this city great, and you continue to. I always tell people about it. I tell them how much I'm in love with this city. I don't have too many complaints. However, I am here opposing the Mobile Home Park for being rezoned for high density. We don't just come here collectively complaining, we also come with solutions, and I think you're going to hear some great solutions. My hopes here today are to get you all to give a timeout on this, and I certainly understand with 30 years of construction experience and planning under my belt, I certainly understand some of these issues that you're facing here. The time deadlines are critical, I understand. We certainly don't want to give these decisions to the state. However, there is still enough time to come up with better solutions, and I believe we have better solutions. It's not easy doing your job, I can't imagine, but you guys are doing a great job, and we all appreciate it. We have a lot of great neighbors, a lot of smart people in our community, from doctors to lawyers, excuse my voice, to retired people, and this has really been a lot of, we spent a lot of time over the last couple of weeks with emails and phone calls discussing this. So, we're here to help. We're not just here to complain. I'm hoping today, since Mike is going to give you all the nuts and the bolts of what we have planned here, I'm hoping that we can at least get a timeout, please. We have some time, and we understand the urgency again, but we do believe we have some solutions. I don't feel I was given fair notice, by the way, even though there was some notices put out with the whole COVID thing going on this last year. I'm not sure anybody was paying a lot of attention to a lot of things they were trying to all survive, and I was one of them. I just learned of this a few weeks ago, and I stay plugged in. You know, I was plugged in with the CV link and opposing that as well, and we pulled that off. Please consider postponing this until we can reevaluate it. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Denise Roberg.
It's close, it's Robert, but that's okay. I've lost my voice, so. Anyway, good afternoon, Mayor Well, councilmen, staff. I love living in Rancho Mirage. It's the best city in the valley, and I hope we all work to keep it that way. I'm greatly opposed to the 29 overlay, 28. Nine is great. I live right next door to the trailer park, and even when the park was there, there was congestion on Peters Road. So, if you went to go up to 28 per acre, it will be a disaster. And the reason we all bought in that area was because we loved the low density, and I've lived there now going on 20 years. And I don't understand why you would increase the density so much on that acreage and then keep the other acres, those beautiful empty lots, at one acre. So, it's just a bad idea completely. And the road, I go home every night because I still work. When I turn off the freeway at 5:00, that's when the most traffic is. I have to turn off that Highway 111 very fast in order not to bring everything to a dead stop. You put over 28 per acre, I think there's 13 acres, what's that multiplied by, well, just say 300 more people working every day and accessing Peterson Road? It'd be a disaster. I give any of my extra time to Mike, and thank you very much.
Next speaker is Jack Swinson.
Mayor, councilman, thank you for your time. I'm a 38-year resident of Rancho Mirage, my wife and I. We've lived on Peterson Road since 2005, and I'm going to give most of my time to Mike, but I would like to comment, and I think the notice was not appropriate, okay? We should have had better notice than, I expect that from this council. This is the best-managed city in the valley. You guys do a great job, but you didn't give us the proper notice. I know it was legal, but it wasn't proper, and I am very disappointed that that notice was not clearly done, especially to the people that are affected close by that trailer, that trailer park. I also want to say one more thing, and that is that, you know, I think you got to think about the people that are going to be living there. Where are their jobs? Where's their transportation? Where are their schools, okay? Nowhere near this place, okay? So, don't just think about us, we don't like it, but think about the people that have to live there. Those people deserve better. Thank you. I'll give the rest of my time to Mike.
Next speaker is Kaye Williams.
Hello. As she said, my name's Kaye Williams, and I've been a desert resident around this area since '64, and 21 years on Peterson, and I agree with everything that's been said, and the rest of my time I am giving to Mr. Michael Fontana. Thank you.
Next speaker is Catherine Swinson.
Hello, everyone.
What was your name again, please?
Hi, nice to meet you. Hi, nice to see you in person. Pardon me?
Your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Catherine Swinson. You and I have spoken. I'm Jack Swinson's wife. Catherine Swinson. And I'm giving the rest of my time to Mike. I appreciate you being here and doing this work. Thank you.
The last speaker card I have is Mike Fontana.
Anyone else here in person that didn't fill out a speaker card that wishes to speak? All right, we will go to our remote audience. It's just identified as Lisa. Lisa, if you're there, if you could state your name for the record and make your comment.
Hi there, I'm Lisa McFadden. I'm a resident of Rancho Mirage, and I'd like to delegate my time to Mike Fontana. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Shan Dornhacker, and while I'm only a new resident to Rancho Mirage, I have, and my family are deeply invested in helping the city to grow. Your idea of fair notice is the equivalent to the Vogons in Hitchhiker's Guide to the Galaxy, post the information as obscurely as possible and ensure that you get your way. I want to address that I only found out about this two days ago from posting a next door by Mike Fontana. I then went to every one of my neighbors and property owners on the Thunder Road area where you were proposing another super-high-density building, and none of them, not my landlord, not any of the residents, I passed out 100 flyers, knew that this was going to happen today. And so, I would question your outreach. And to the answer of the, there's been no email notices, there's been no outreach about or notifications of the town hall meetings. I also want to address that the, you had brilliant applicants for the City Council position, including experts in RENA and affordable housing that applied for this position, which you overlooked in favor of a real estate, a commercial and private real estate investor who happens to be local and has contributed to, you know, making tons of money off of the new developments that have been designed for the wealthy. To that effect, the state has had to take control over the affordable housing and dictate, because cities like Rancho Mirage have long only invested in development for wealthy people to the expense of that. In return, your staff and the city has decided to punish anyone who is not wealthy by saying we are going to relegate all of this high-density housing into poor areas. Thunder Road is a food desert. It has one road in and out, laying this kind of high-density housing would be a detriment to every resident that lives there now and any future resident. On top of that, any affordable housing that has to happen needs to include pathways to homeownership for low, moderate, and income people so they invest in this community. I recommend that you put the low and moderate income housing overlaid into the current developments the City Council has already approved that are in process to create mixed income communities, which will in turn have better health, financial outcomes, community outcomes for the entire city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Hi, yes, my name's Brad Anderson. I've actually been in, I think, I don't know, over 20 years living in Rancho Mirage, and I'm opposed to this. I was at the Planning Commission meeting too, and I opposed it at that stage too. I just want to remind the City Council that you are working under a state of emergency, and City Hall has been closed, and it continues to be closed on Fridays to the public, so there's an aspect there of accessibility for the public and for city services. And I have very, very strong issues with the housing overlays or the lower-income housing overlays, because you are, I mean, it's have and have-nots here, you are designating appears, the city refr, I guess what I would say, the city really wants to concentrate on city-owned properties, and this may be an aspect from years earlier, like the dog park, for instance. I understand that was done in a land swap, and that property, and so I imagine all the property adjacent to that would also be included, but I'm speculating. So, where's that land swap? Like with the CV link, all this stuff, it's, if you're going to do this type of overlay, you have to include not just city-owned properties, but any vacant properties and any commercial sites or sites that are feasible in the city, if you want to be fair and just and not, because it does, it looks like this is done intentionally not to punish people, but to have other profit from others, you know? So, that's my take on it. I guess that's all I have. I think that, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Daniel Donahue.
Council members, thank you for taking the time to listen to the concerns of residents and homeowners today. I know these decisions are not easy. I'm a full-time resident of 70305 Desert Cove Avenue, just moved to this beautiful city and location nine months ago, and I'm opposed to the decision to change the zoning of the former site of the Rancho Palms Mobile Home Park directly behind my home. As a former schoolteacher for 20 years and currently a new small business owner, I've never made a ton of money, and I'm generally very supportive of efforts to create affordable housing. Socioeconomically, I'm also not your typical owner of a property in a residential estate zone. My husband and I put our life savings on the line to purchase a small 1,400-square-foot house on a decent-sized property so we could transition from our busy, crowded, and dirty inner-city San Francisco neighborhood apartment to a quieter neighborhood and small home with a view. I dispute that there have been significant public outreach in regards to this plan over the last year. We did our due diligence while purchasing our home only nine months ago. We did our due diligence while purchasing our home only nine months ago. We found out through word of mouth there were plans to be a one-story affordable senior housing development behind our home, which we were thrilled about. We then called the city to confirm and found out there were no current plans, but that the current zoning laws would not allow more than one-story structures behind us, and no mention of zoning change, and this is within the last year. To find out without any notification from the city and a chance comment from a neighbor that the zoning laws were going to be changed and there could potentially be dense two- and three-story structures directly behind our new home was shocking to say the least. As I understand it, the city has several other options of city-owned land to fulfill their affordable housing requirement with the state of California. I strongly oppose the rezoning of the former Rancho Palms Mobile Home Park, and I strongly urge the city council to delay your decision, notify all property owners within 500 feet of the subject parcels, and do your own due diligence to encourage a much greater public participation in this decision. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comment. The next speaker is Tom Sodenski. Tom, it shows you're muted on our side. You have to unmute yourself. We cannot hear you.
I'm unmuting.
There you go.
Hi, my name's Tom Sodenski. I have property at Peterson Road. I've lived in Rancho Mirage since 2006, and I've been trying to develop some property in the neighborhood, and it's been a hard task to get through planning and through all of the different hurdles. And I think that the city should stand by the same requirements to notify people, not just through the newspaper, but through public notice by sending them mail so that they can be part of the community outreach for such a large project that's going to affect this area. I just believe that putting that many units between the Wash and the mountain on a block away from Highway 111, which is the main thoroughfare through this great city, is not the greatest solution, and I think that all other options should be looked at prior to approving this housing element. And I cede any additional time to Mike.
Thank you for your comment. I will ask one more time if we have any other speakers that have not spoken yet. Anyone here in person that hasn't spoken yet? To our remote audience. Okay, Mr. Mike Fontana, please come up.
Thank you. Thank you for being here and listening to us today. It is unusual for me to be here on the opposite side of an issue with the city of Rancho Mirage. I've been a resident here for 18 years. My neighborhood and I stood shoulder to shoulder with this city council when we took on CV Link, and we prevailed. We're a known commodity. I've spoken over the years with previous city managers, previous council members, previous housing managers about our concern for the Rancho Palms Mobile Home Park. And I've asked many times that if the park is in play, we want to know about it. Why? Because we want to be part of it. We want to be part of the solution and not part of the problem. And had we been, probably wouldn't be here today, okay? So unfortunately, the city met all the requirements to notice in the newspaper, who gets the Desert Sun delivered to their driveway anymore, and who reads that? And so I want to say, maybe it was efficient, but it wasn't effective. And it wasn't effective because in your public sessions, you invited housing advocates and you invited builders, but you didn't invite one neighbor, not one. And you didn't have public input. As a matter of fact, if you'll give me a minute, I'll get back to this, okay? But I think it's a shame, and I think what we really need to do to solve the problem is, as Jim said, take a timeout, take a big, deep breath, get the neighborhoods involved, get in the mail, notify the property owners within 500 feet, not just of this site, but all the sites, and get their input. And get it right the first time, not right with the state, not right with checking the boxes for the state, but get it right for the community. That's what we are. I mean, our community is a series of neighborhoods. That's what makes up the community. That's what gives us our strength and our uniqueness, and we've kind of forgot about that. So I'd like to do a couple things before I get into maybe some details. We still have 50 people that are online. A lot of people are really shy about getting up in front of the city council. They're shy about being part of the public record, but they need to be. And I don't know if there's a mechanism that we can use to have the people in the audience, in the viewing audience on Zoom, raise their hand if they're in opposition to this housing element, and if they support delaying the decision and notifying people within 500 feet. Can we do that, Kristi? Is that a possibility?
No.
You can't do that. So I'm going to assume then that we can't see if anybody's in favor of it, and I'm going to assume then that you have 50 people online that are in opposition to this particular element of the housing plan. Kristi, do you have a list? Do you have a quantity of how many letters you've received in opposition to the housing element?
I would ask our planning manager or our housing manager to look for that.
Okay.
But please continue.
All right. Well, there are other people in here today that are in the audience that really didn't want to speak, but if you just stand up and let the city council know if you're in opposition to the housing element, I'd like them to see, okay? And of course, this is a meeting that's at 1:00 in the afternoon. This neighborhood is not a retirement neighborhood. This is an active neighborhood. It consists of low-income mobile homes, it's senior housing, it's large estates, and a lot of people work and couldn't be here today. But what I'm trying to say is that without your notification, just with a little stimulus from inside the neighborhood, we've got 50 people online, and we've got a dozen and a half people in the audience that are concerned about this, and you need to listen. Okay? So why do we want you to make a delay? Why would we ask you to do that? And I'm going to say it's because we want to help. Okay, we're not here to throw stones at anybody. It's just that it can be better. The plan can be better, the process can be better, and we'd like to help you do that. We'd like to be able to sit down with staff in a room and talk about ideas and exchange things and understand their dilemmas and have them understand ours and come up to a solution, but we haven't been able to do that. City Hall's been closed, COVID's affected us, there's been no notification. Quite honestly, I found out about it when I read the planning commission agenda, which was on a Friday, and the planning commission was on a Wednesday. City Hall's closed on Friday. City Hall was closed on Monday and Tuesday. You can't get to anybody to get any information. So we went to the planning commission, and I think that maybe the planning commission's compromised. The chairman can't participate because he lives within 1,000 feet of the subject property, and Mr. Downs had just graduated to the city council, and there were only three members. Now, this document that was presented to the planning commission is 170-plus pages, okay? It's a big document. It takes hours to read it and even more to begin to understand it. Your packet is over 600 pages, okay? And if one of you, all of you, any of you read all 600 pages, then you have my accolades, okay? I didn't read 600 pages, but I read a lot of it. Okay? So we're trying to keep you from making a mistake, not only for the city, but for the neighborhood and for all the people affected on all these parcels, including potentially people that would occupy these units. So I want to read something to you. I want to read this from, this is from, give me a minute here. By the way, all those people giving me their time, I was hoping not to take it, but I might. This is a letter to Director Jeremy from Department of Housing and Community Development. It's dated November 23rd, 2021, and it's part of your packet. You've got to dig in it to find it, but it's part of your packet. And it talks about a submittal that had deficiencies, okay? And the first deficiency is outreach. "The element generally mentions public participation but must describe outreach specific to AFFH. Summarize comments and how comments were considered and incorporated in the analysis." Now, if you go to the back of the 170-page document, you'll find the attendees, okay? The attendees are all government employees, all housing agencies, and then the second session was all with builders and developers. There were no neighbors there, therefore there were no comments from neighborhoods. And the state even recognizes that as a deficiency because they go on. They go on in item number five, and it tells you that this is a deficiency. "Include a diligent effort by the local government to achieve public participation of all economic segments of the community in this development of housing element, and the program shall describe this effort." Well, I got to tell you what, it doesn't. It doesn't involve those people, it doesn't involve us people, and it doesn't describe the effort, okay? It has a list of people that were invited to a meeting, people that attended, and I will tell you again, you can look for yourself, those are housing agencies and housing developers, not anyone from the neighborhood. Okay? Now, I don't know if we can go back to the slideshow that Jeremy presented. Maybe we can, maybe we can't. So maybe you can visualize this. There are, in the slideshow, the slide talks about three assembly bills. Assembly Bill 330, I can't remember the other two, but it omits a really important one. And this is one that's referenced in the plan, but not in the presentation. This is one that the planning commission didn't review. Why? Because it wasn't presented. And it's called Assembly Bill 166. An assembly bill says, "The law prohibits a city, a county, or a city and county from reducing, requiring, or permitting the reduction of a residential density to a lower density that is below the density that was utilized by the Department of Housing and Community Development, terming compliance." That means the density that you've ascribed to the parcel. In this situation, a parcel that has an underlying zoning of nine units per acre that now has an overlay zone of 20 units per acre, oh, we forgot to talk about the bonus, the bonus density of up to 50%, which if allowed would take the yield to 42 units per acre, okay? So it says, "The city and the county may reduce the residential density." Jeremy did tell the planning commission that, but he didn't tell them how, okay? For a parcel, it identifies with sufficient sites prescribed, so there's no net loss in residential unit capacity. So what you're going to have to do, okay, and we'll get into the staff action plan a little bit later, but what you're going to have to do is you're going to have to adopt this plan as part of your general plan. You're going to have to go in and change the zoning on the property, and then you're going to have to change it again to add the overlay. And you don't have to do that, because if you do want to reduce the density, if you're saying, well, this is our property and we're going to control it, yeah, it's going to be 28, but it could be less, you've got to undo it. You've got to undo the overlay, you've got to undo the zoning, you've got to undo the general plan, because now you won't be consistent with it. And so part of this is, why do that and then undo it if you don't really want to do 28 units per acre on any of these sites, including the Rancho Palms Mobile Home Park? All right, let's take a look at Senate Bill 330, which Jeremy did a good job telling you about Senate Bill 330, but he didn't tell you all about it, okay? Because it's big, you know, it's part of a 690-page packet. Who has time to do all that? So this law says, "The law prohibits a local agency from disapproving or conditioning approval in a manner that renders infeasible a housing development project for very low, low, or moderate-income households or an emergency shelter," blah, blah, blah. So basically, what it says, you can't, let's use Rancho Mobile Homes Park as an example. Let's say that you go through with this, and it's overlaid, and the zoning now allows 28 units per acre. You say, well, we've got a height restriction. You can't go four stories, or you can't go three stories, or you can't go two stories. And we've got an open space requirement, and we've got public street requirements and setbacks, and we need sidewalks and parking. And all of a sudden now, you've designated this for 28 units per acre, but your development standards don't allow it. And let's say it's nine units per acre, okay? So the difference in Rancho Mobile Homes Park from 28 units per acre to nine units per acre is 200 units, okay? At one acre to nine, you can get 109 units. At 28 units per acre, you can get 310. So let's see what Assembly Bill 330 tells you what they'll do. Okay? Senate Bill 330 says, "The Act requires a court to impose a fine on a local agency under certain circumstances that requires the fine be at least $10,000 per housing unit in the housing development project on the date the application was completed." So you can do it, you can undo it, but there are consequences, and you have to be cognizant of that. If you were to take Rancho Palms Mobile Home and reduce the number of units by 200, you knew the math, 10,000 a unit, that's the minimum, you got a $2 million bill. Okay? So I want to go back, this slide, I know the public can't see this slide, but this was the slide from the planning presentation. And it says, "The total capacity that you've identified in the housing element is 2,322, but you're only required to have 1,741." Okay? You're good at math. I'm good at math. That's 581 units, 34%. So we're 34% over the state's requirement that we have to check the box on. And what you could do, if you chose to do today, you could say, take the overlay off of the Rancho Palms Mobile Home Park and Thunder Road, and your numbers will match the state's numbers, not exactly, but close. And if you want to replace it, you could look at the 40 acres by the high school that you've left at 1 to 9, there are no residences adjacent to it, and apply the overlay to it. You could take the acreage that you have behind the dog park, which part of it is this, it's 25 of 50 acres, okay? And you do have the overlay on it. You could add eight more acres to that and apply the overlay to it. You're back to scratch. You've got a 34% surplus, but you have to want to do it, and you have to instruct staff that you want them to do it, or it won't be done. There are other options, and when Jim said there are other options, there are other options. The options are not infinite, but there are other options. Do you remember the slide that talked about Planning Area F and E? Well, Planning Area F and E really was looked at, but it wasn't allocated. So let me tell you where Planning Area F and E are. That's City Hall, and that's going west on 111 to our border. So that takes in the little mountain cove that a hotel was planned for that never got built, that's for sale, that's 12 acres, that easily could be mixed-use development, commercial, it could be residential, and it could be low, moderate residential. But it wasn't, although it was identified, it wasn't utilized. And what we're trying to say is that there are other options, okay? Now, let's go to the action plan, because this is in your staff report too. And, but it's part of a big document, okay? It has Senate Bill 166 missing. That means there's information you didn't receive, okay? It has public outreach indicated here, part of the housing element, staff's conducted outreach with Terra Nova and the staff consultant, online community workshops. But look at the list of the people that participated. You know, there's no one from any neighborhood affected by this, okay? But here's what the staff says, next steps, 22 to 25. 22 to 25. Now, I will tell you that there are paragraphs inside the housing element that say there are no plans for the Rancho Palms Mobile Home Park and other areas. And that's probably true to a point. But there are plans, and I'm gonna tell you what they are. Adopt affordable housing overlay and allow the city to consider densities of up to 28 units per acre by right of zone. Okay, that means as soon as you put that overlay on it, that's the density. It's by right of zone. Okay? Not including the bonus, which is 50% or 42 units. So between 22 and 25, staff intends to change the zoning and adopt this overlay. Establish a development strategy and secure entitlements for city-owned Site B. That's the Rancho Palms Mobile Home Park. Okay, so we're gonna establish a development strategy and secure entitlements. Okay, exactly what we don't know. We do know it's 28 units per acre, and we know that you can't meet all your other requirements for setbacks and open space and streets and parking without going vertical. Okay, and I think many of you might have seen the city of Coachella last week on the news. Maybe saw the little clip about what they've done at that kind of density. So the first buildings are three stories, and the next buildings are four-story. Okay, and if you think that's right for Rancho Mirage, I think you're wrong. Not in this location. Maybe in another location, but not in this location. Maybe by the high school. Be a great spot for families. Okay, so that's 22 to 25. Here's what we're gonna do, 26 to 29. Okay, that's four years away. We're gonna construct, and we're gonna occupy city-owned Site B. Now, for a document that says we have no plans, I think maybe you do. Maybe you don't. No, you do, but you do. So my point is, when you do this, by Senate Bill 166, it becomes very hard to undo. It can be done, very hard to undo. But by Senate Bill 330, you've got to pay the price. Okay, and the price is financial because you're gonna reduce the densities. Okay, so if you don't want these densities, if you think this is wrong, then delay. And let us work this out. You've got 50 people online. You've got a dozen and a half people in the audience. They're all saying, "Give us a chance." You know, provide notification. You know, I found it absolutely humorous today because I get every month a letter from the gas company telling me how my house compares with all the other houses that are my size. I get letters from the Energy Authority. I can't get a letter from the city when they're gonna change the zoning and the property behind me. We know we can do better than that. So I think I've said enough. I would love to have dialogue with you. I'd love to have a two-way conversation. I think it's merited. And I urge you, please, please, do the right thing. Delay your vote on this. Kick it back to staff and us in a positive way, and we will work with you to come up with something that is acceptable and workable and better than what you proposed. And I thank you very, very much for tolerating me and giving me this time today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We did have one more person raise their hand. So Karen B., go ahead. You have to unmute yourself now, Karen, because we can't hear you. There you go.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Karen, and I am calling for a couple of different reasons, right? The first one being that California law does have to be followed, and you do have to follow density procedures as the law requires you in the state of California. The other being that your city has already been out of compliance since October 15 with your housing element, and there is liability there in the form of an injunction stopping all construction if you don't complete your housing element. So just wanting to let you know those two facts that have not been spoken about in this hearing. The other being that in every city, does not matter which city you are, families deserve to live anywhere and everywhere. You can't really stop the growth of families. One of the comments I have not heard today is the need for low-income senior housing in your city, although I have heard speakers mention that they are either on a fixed income themselves or elderly and still working. So it would make sense that you also have a very public conversation about low-income senior housing and the need for that, along with the need of high-density, low-income housing everywhere along the city and everywhere that is required by law. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We have no one else that has indicated that they wish to speak on this item, so we'll close the public testimony portion of the public hearing. And we'll return this to the council for discussion.
Can we have the individual who prepared the document answer some questions?
Yeah, so before we get to council questions or comments, I'll make a few comments on this item, and then I'll turn it over to Jeremy if he wants to address anything that was brought up. And then we'll go to council member comments or questions. From there, we do have our consultant here, so. I really appreciate everyone's public comments today. You know, there is nothing that I'm going to say is a criticism of their concerns. And that's why we have this process so that they can come and express their concerns and their viewpoint about their neighborhood, which we appreciate that you guys did. So thank you for taking the time to be here today. Staff shares some of your frustration. You know, the state is passing laws that just blanket California as if we're all the Bay Area or LA. The state has never fully understood our area, our low-density land use pattern, our available land. And the state's answer to affordable housing, since they killed the primary builder of affordable housing over a decade ago with the RDA, that ceased, almost ceased, affordable housing development in California, which is part of why we have this crisis. RDA's 20% of the money that the redevelopment agencies got went to the development and operation of affordable housing in California, and it was the number-one builder of affordable housing. And the state never came up with a solution. And the state killed the redevelopment agencies to fix their own house and their own problems. So, you know, we're in this situation where California is a very expensive place to build and to live. And we took the primary revenue source that we had to develop affordable housing and subsidize it, and the state took it away and didn't backfill it with anything. And so part of the reason why we're in this situation today are those previous actions. And the state's answer to that is come out with laws like this that essentially remove the city's ability to implement its land use authority. And so we started this conversation with the state, and everywhere where we have high-density residential zoning, which is currently nine units to the acre, the state said all of that changes to 30. And that includes the Rancho Palms Mobile Home Park. And so over the past year, city staff has been working with the state to demonstrate that we have the ability to meet the housing numbers that they allocated to us, but in an appropriate or in a way that is more appropriate for us. And that was the purpose of these affordability overlays. Now, obviously, you know, one of the speakers brought up that, you know, we're identifying, you know, roughly 2,300 units, and you only need 1,741. Well, there's a reason for that. It provides us with the ability to exercise some discretion in the way that projects are developing. And, you know, we've talked about it at the joint study session between the city council and the planning commission. You know, we're not planning to remove the zoning if it's implemented by the council. So, you know, some of the issues that were brought up with some of the assembly bills of you can't turn around and downzone it. There is no plan to remove these affordability overlays by the city. And so from a staff perspective, those aren't really applicable for the areas that we've identified because there is no plan to come back and propose to reduce those densities later. You know, we had the requirement by the state. We had to show them this inventory, and it had to be spread out through our community. So you can't segregate it to, say, the north end of the city. It's gotta be spread out through their community. And we had to go through the inventory list with the state and come up with a roadmap of how we're going to meet these numbers. And so some of the information that was being presented was required elements of the plan. So currently, there are no pending projects on this. If a project came through for one of these sites at a later point in time, if it's city-owned property, they're gonna have to come to us as the property owner. If it's not city-owned property, then they're gonna come to us with the normal development package. And at that point, that allows it, by complying with state law, that allows the process to still flow through the city process that our community is used to. So when there is a project in a specific area, then all the normal things will happen. There will be notice to anyone within a 500-foot radius. City staff and planning staff can analyze the project. And if something allows for, so in the affordability overlay, you know, there are conditions on some of these projects or these sites where, you know, just because it's zoned up to a certain potential doesn't mean that it has to be approved at that density. And so when we talked about it at the joint city council-planning commission study session, you know, obviously, to get these type of densities, you need height, right? And that's just something that you don't see a lot of out here in the desert. You know, and we talked about really two sites. We talked about the Rancho Palms site, which is next to a low-density land use. Obviously, there's some other mobile home parks and stuff in the area. But when you look at this site, it borders, you know, a single-family community. And so height would be a big challenge there versus, you know, maybe one of the other sites that we've identified, like up by the high school or adjacent to the dog park, where there's no real maybe neighborhoods that have established there yet, then yeah, I think height would be a little bit easier through that process. And so I appreciate, you know, the concerns that we heard today. And that's why this plan, one, it complies with state law. And two, well, it complies with state law to the best of our ability. And two, we purposely identified more units than what was allocated because we know that we're going to exercise some discretion depending on what the project is and where it's located within our city. You know, the, from my perspective, the council, you know, and the planning commission, when they see projects and, you know, they really do consider the impacts. And ultimately, you know, a lot of the position that, you know, the staff feels we're in is we have to do what state law says. And that was the purpose of this housing element update, was to comply with state law. And these affordability overlays were designed to accommodate the number of units that we need. That doesn't remove the city's ability to look at projects as they get proposed and see if they're site-appropriate. So as an example, if an area has an affordability overlay on it, you can consider the impacts to that project based on the conditions of what's around it and what it's going to do to public streets. Basically, an environmental review looks at all those things. The other thing that is probably the biggest factor is in two of the areas we're talking about, the city is the property owner. And so that's gonna directly involve us, not just from an entitlement standpoint, but also from a project standpoint because any potential developer is gonna need to buy that from the city and need to come to the city with what their vision is for that piece of property. And so, you know, obviously, this was, when we get these mandates from the state, a lot of times, they're not really built for our area. And I think, you know, this is an example of this. And I know sometimes it's easy to, you know, sum it up and just take shots and say, "Oh, it's affordable housing. You know, you don't want affordable housing." That's not it at all. The city has a great track record on affordable housing. We have four properties that we built, we manage, and we operate. They are some of the best facilities out here in the Coachella Valley. And I would stack our affordable housing up to any other community with the job the city does in maintaining them, keeping the rents very affordable. We do extra things like prescription rent credits. So if you qualify for certain income levels, you can get, for what you pay for your prescription medication, you're eligible to remove some of that from your rent. Some of our communities, when you drive by them, you have no idea they're affordable communities. One of them is by the Rancho Mirage Community Park, San Jacinto. That is a beautiful community. And if someone drove by that, they wouldn't know that was an affordable housing project right in the middle of our city. So it's not, you know, I know sometimes, depending on where somebody's viewpoint is, it's, you know, this is affordable housing, and it's important. it's, you know, this is affordable housing and it's important, and I'm not trying to lose that message, but I also don't want to just sit here and not acknowledge that these state mandates just keep coming, and they usually don't account for how the Coachella Valley is made up. It's usually envisioned, you know, we're a very dense populated area, and there's not that much available land, and so you need the height to get the housing you need. It's not the case out here. Nonetheless, you know, we had an obligation to put together something that complies with state law, and we feel like this plan does that. And I'm not trying to discredit the concerns that we've heard from the community, but by putting the plan together this way, staff feels it was the best way to comply with the law within the manner that would allow Rancho Mirage and the city council to maintain some say-so in the process. And so, that's why we ended up on some of these sites. You know, there's other external factors that dictated some of the sites, and the state reviewed each site that we identified and said whether they would accept it or not for the affordability overlay. And so, you know, the state has tentatively said, maybe. But after today, if whatever happens with this plan, at some point, it's got to go back to the state for the final, and then we'll find if they're even going to accept what we've presented to them at that time. So this was a, not an easy process, and, you know, we attempted to do it in a manner that would allow the affordable housing to develop that needs to, but also, you know, given some of the existing characteristics with some of the sites, they're not all going to develop the same way, and they're not all going to develop to these densities, given where the sites are and what's around them. And so, Jeremy, I don't, I don't know if you want to add anything or not.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out. As Isaiah mentioned, we certainly understand the concerns, and, you know, we've been working on this project for a long time, and we do feel that this plan that we're presenting does well to comply with state regulations and all the different changes and laws that have occurred over the last housing cycle, while at the same time, giving the city the most amount of control for what gets built in the future. So, that's all I wanted to say. I would like to invite Nicole Krista up to, to make any comments and, of course, answer your questions, being that she is the foremost expert on these things. So, thank you.
That was very flattering, and I don't believe I am. However, before I answer your questions, I would like to start with a personal note. I've lived in Rancho Mirage for 39 years. The reason we moved to Rancho Mirage is because in 1983, the city participated at the time through the redevelopment agency in the construction of a project called Rancho Mirage Resort, and it offered a first-time moderate-income home-buying program. My husband and I got married in 1983, and we took advantage of that program, and we bought a condo at Rancho Mirage Resort. So your housing program has had a direct impact on my life. We moved out, bought a house, and we've lived there since 1987, very happily. Affordable housing is a necessary part of our process. That is my personal opinion. On a professional level, we've written your housing elements since 1987. This housing element is probably the hardest one we've had to write. It is more complicated now than it has been in 30 years. The range of units that we provided are specifically designed to allow, as Isaiah stated, that the city have flexibility to assign those units either to all of the sites equally or to focus them on one of the sites. And they may be city sites, or they may be private sites. But we purposely designed it so that you have considerably more than you need so that you're able to spread, spread them around. We have also argued with enough success that they let us stay at 28 units to the acre, that projects in the valley do not build at 30 units to the acre. And the research that we did that's included in the element shows that across the valley, projects are being built in the 12 to 22 unit per acre range, and that varies from city to city. I do not believe that any project that would come forward in Rancho Mirage would come forward at 28 units to the acre. I think the market won't support it, and having worked both sides of the counter, we represent several affordable housing developers, they aren't looking for 30 units to the acre in the desert. Most of them are looking in the 15 to 20 range, and that is what we would expect to see here as well as in your surrounding cities. And I think that's enough pontification for one afternoon.
All right, Mayor, if there's, if you want to start the council comments or questions?
Thank you for your comments. Richard, would you like to make a comment at this point?
Just a couple of questions, if we've got time to. Jeremy, in regard to one of the requests today from Mr. Fontana had to do with extending the timeframe of making this work. Is this something that we can do? Are we at a point now where we can't move time-wise? Or what would be your recommendation as far as that goes?
Staff's recommendation is not to delay, simply because we have a significant amount of work to do after today. So this is not the end-all, be-all of what we're working on. There, there are a number of things that we're going to have to begin work on immediately upon this plan being adopted. So, there's more work to do, and that's why we're recommending that we start working on those things sooner than later.
So at this point, any recommended changes or modifications would be too late to implement?
I think what city staff would want to know from the council is, you know, obviously, you know, to maybe generalize, you know, the public comments today want the affordability overlay removed from that area. And so, if we're, if you're going to delay it, it would be for that purpose. So, staff would look to the council to say, if, if you're looking at other areas, we've got the map today, give us some direction on what that looks like, and we would go from there. That would be the purpose of delaying it, is you want to move the affordability overlay.
Isaiah, do we have the time to do that kind of change?
Look, you guys are the decision-makers, so we're, we're already behind on the state's schedule. So, you know, I wouldn't let, we're, we're already, if the council desired for this to be changed, city staff would go back and change it. I don't really care what this, you know, state says about an arbitrary deadline. They're going to get our plan when they get our plan. So, you know, it's more of, give staff the direction on why you would send it back, and if it's for the purpose of moving the affordability overlays, then give us some direction on, on where that might be. So you're the decision-maker. If you want to delay it, delay it. We'll, we'll deal with everything else later.
Richard, you have another question?
There seems to be some issue from the public, at least that I've received over the last couple of weeks, regarding the 500-foot setback or, or mailing contact information to, can you address the, the 500 question?
Sure. So, when we have a specific project come through on a site, there's a 500-foot mailing of that project. This is a citywide policy. It's part of our general plan, and so, per government code and our municipal code, we gave general notice to the whole community. It's not feasible to provide a notice to every single address in Rancho Mirage every time we do something that impacts the city as a whole. So that's why we give general notice, and we did that through various methods.
So there are seven elements to a general plan. We've done two of those. The, the five remaining elements, will they be handled in the same way as far as mailing to the, the residents?
So the last time we updated our general plan, it was the same type of noticing, right? When you're dealing with a citywide document, it's not a specific notice, it's general notice to your community. So, in the future, if a project comes through on one of these sites, then that's when you'll have the 500-foot mailing, because it's specific to that area. This is a citywide policy. All right?
Thank you.
Iris, did you have a comment?
Well, I have a couple of questions. Number one, I believe that this Rancho Palms Mobile Park was designated only for affordable housing. We already have, as Isaiah said, four magnificent complexes that are beautiful, affordable, and senior housing. It always surprises me that those cannot be used as part of this 1741. I think what we seem to be dealing with on many levels is that we're concerned about staying in control as a city to some degree, and that by using our own land that we own presently, we certainly have more control. But once we vote on this overlay and of the one parcel, it sounds that we're locked into whatever amount of units we have used in that overlay. And is that still a possibility that when it comes to the city for any approvals as far as planning and structural building, can that be changed to accommodate, number one, the size of the property? But also, one of my concerns is transportation and the areas that would be more desirable for shopping and for amenities to the people that would be moving in to a complex on that land. It seems to me that if we did utilize the area near the high school and the areas near the dog park, if we're, if we can, limit ourselves to two complex areas, those would be closer to amenities, they would be closer to transportation, and to me, it would just make more sense if we could use, utilize those areas maybe first, see how that works out, and then see if there are any other developers who would want to come into our city and purchase private land for the development of future affordable housing units. But I think starting with this particular parcel kind of limits us, and if we could start with the housing in the area near the high school and near the dog park, it may put us in a better position to understand exactly what our final outcome might be and exactly how many units we are able to provide in those two, and then also, maybe in the Cove area of Highway 111. Those seem to be, you know, I would think more desirable for families or people that need transportation and don't have the immediate use of a car. And I'm concerned about the traffic, as was stated by a number of people for this, and I think that it maybe, I don't feel that we should put off the voting necessarily, but if we are so limited in any changes that we need to make or desire to make, then maybe a short delay might be more desirable to get the input, because Mike Fontana said he's got several solutions, and it might be worth listening to, to see where those solutions might take us.
Yeah, so just to be clear, the sites you mentioned are part of the housing element, and we're not talking about one parcel. I think, if I'm understanding you correctly, it's the placement of the affordability overlay. Is that what you're saying?
Right. Yes. And does that lock us in?
So, it locks in the density. So one of your questions was, if there's the affordability overlay on it, do you have to approve a project at that density? The answer's no. You don't have to approve a project at that density. You know, given the two examples that I provided earlier, the area by the dog park already has one of these overlays on it. And so, that's already a site. The other two sites are the Thunder Road area, where there's the current apartments that were built under the county, and then the Rancho Home, or the Rancho Mobile Home Park, which has been the subject of the vast majority of the public comment that we've gotten.
Right.
And, and so, just to be clear, we can't count the existing stock of affordable housing to meet the 1741 units. So, everything we've done in the past, it's great, but that, that's not what this plan is about. This plan is about new units.
Right.
Iris, any other comments?
No, not right now. Thank you.
Steve?
So Jeremy, tell me a little bit about the parcel near the high school and the parcel near the dog park. I believe you've already done some work on that, and you probably have some reasons why you limited those parcels to some degree. So, so, tell us a little about, about that. Why is it more difficult to expand to those parcels?
So, the area near the dog park, the city owns approximately 50 acres of land up there, and half of that land is currently zoned as open space, public park, and the other half, which is the balance, 25 acres, is zoned as high-density residential. So, as part of this plan, we are proposing to put the affordability overlay over that 25 acres of existing high-density zoned land on that area. There's approximately 36 acres of vacant high-density zoned land south of the high school. That is not owned by the city. That was, that is privately owned. And so, we are not proposing to put the affordability overlay on that project, because, again, that's not something the city owns, and by virtue of doing that and increasing those densities to 28 units per acre, then a private developer could come in and take full advantage of that, and then you would have a project that's 36 acres at 28 dwelling units per acre, potentially. So that is why we did not include the affordability overlay on that particular property. It's still part of the inventory, it's high-density zoned land, it just does not include the affordability overlay.
Okay. So we have roughly about 1,700 or 1,800 affordable homes that we have to make allowances for in the, in the upcoming housing element, correct?
Yes.
There are, I looked at the demographics report on the city website today, and it looks like there were 14,792 residences in the city, according to the website today. How likely is it that we're going to need 1,800 affordable housing units over the next eight years? I know it's difficult to predict the future, I understand that, but give me your best guess.
So, I mean, at the end of the day, that's the number of units that was assigned to us, so that's what we have to try to achieve to get built.
But the likelihood that we'll ever have to achieve that much is problematic.
Well, yeah, and I want to distinguish, we have to provide for the opportunity. There is no requirement for us to be involved in subsidizing or building, right? So, it's, it's up to builders and the state to figure out how this is actually going to get built.
To my point. So if we approve this, this doesn't mean it's going to happen. It means it's possible if we get applications from developers. But it doesn't mean that we have to absolutely assure that 1,800 units will be built, affordable housing units will be built. We don't have to do that, we just have to make it available if we are asked by a builder for entitlements to build, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Isaiah, so staff has spent quite a bit of time working on this project over the months, and the reason you've spent quite a bit of time working on this project is because the state requires it. Now, we all know that we need to allow for affordable housing in our communities, but we also know that this is a problem that is serious in the city centers in places like San Diego, LA, San Francisco. It doesn't affect us the same way it does city centers, but we are required by the state to comply with somewhat similar rules and regulations that apply to those areas. So I guess a question I have for you is, if the state hadn't required this, would you have bothered asking staff to do any study, anything like this?
No.
Okay. So the reason that you've come up with this study is so that you have flexibility. It's not likely we'll ever be asked to approve as many as 1,800 units, and this gives you plenty of flexibility to determine where, when, and how a developer can build if they request the ability to build and if they request entitlements. This gives you the flexibility you're, you're searching for. If we limit your flexibility, then we limit our ability, do I understand this correctly? Then we limit our ability to, to be flexible in the future?
Yeah, and, and what it limits is the planning commission and city council's ability to exercise their judgment on what's appropriate for our community. So it takes away our entitlement process, and that's what we're trying to protect to the best of our ability that's been left.
I might also suggest that, I understand I'm sensitive to everything all of you have said, and I appreciate that very, very much, and thank you, Mike, for all the time that you've spent studying this, this issue. Thank you for all the time that you've spent here today. Very much appreciated. I would suggest that maybe it might be appropriate to think about mobilizing some of I would suggest that maybe it might be appropriate to think about mobilizing some of your efforts towards our legislators in Sacramento. It seems to me that some of the issue that we're facing here today is because the state has imposed this on us. And maybe a place to go is the spot where that requirement is coming from. And that's our legislators in San Francisco, or I'm sorry, at Sacramento. And if you were willing to engage in that kind of mobilization, I'm guessing that some of us would be willing to work with you. In any event, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. Charlie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me take this off. You know, sitting here for eight years, to me, this is the most emotional thing that has hit everybody here and all of you, and the 50 people or 100 people that are out there, understanding the situations that you are in. It is heart-wrenching. I think this is, to me, is a bigger thing than CV Link, Mike, or than In-N-Out, or anything that we have gone through. This is very, very important to those neighborhoods that we have in understanding what we're trying to do. My question is, it seems that the big issue is the Mobile Home Park and what can be done there or not done, right? All right. So, the answer I get when I ask this question is, if we leave it that way, we will have the opportunity to say yea or nay. And I think this is something that anybody sitting out there would think, what you're asking, Charlie, is for us to put my trust in who's sitting on this council in the next five years to listen to what you're saying. And I get that, and I'm with you with that. Also, everything that you did, everybody that said the work that you've put into this, my answer is, I think everything you said should be addressed. I think every point you brought up, this should be answered by staff, by us, or by whoever, to put all of you ease of mind. That's what we're here for. And I'm saying that I want to hear the answers to what you said, so that you guys are all certain in your heart of hearts and in our heart of hearts that we are there for you. And I want to hear those answers. The best I can ask is, I think what Richard said and what I'm going to say is, this is so important, the timeline. Is the timeline meaning that next Saturday we have to have this done or next Monday? Is there a few weeks that we can address everything that you and your neighbors and 50 or 100 people out there have to ask this question? Just like the CV Link or the In-N-Out, we answered all of that. We went to all of you with those and said, what do you think, what is your input? And I think you guys deserve that. So, what I'm saying is, can we, I don't know whether table it or put it back where in a couple of weeks we can get together and answer everything that you've said and to see that we're all on the same page and that you understand the situation that this council, this city, this staff is being held up by Sacramento. So, in one way, is it in our hands? Is it not in our hands? And that's my feeling on it, Mike, and everybody. Thank you.
Yeah, I think staff, obviously what we're hearing from the community is, they don't want it there, right? They don't want the overlay there.
Well, I don't think they want it there in the situation of two stories or three stories or 28 per acre. And what I'm hearing back is, if that would happen, we would never allow that to happen. And are we that sure that that would not happen to this neighborhood and these people?
Yeah, so, this is city-owned property, so we are the property owner. So, that site is under our control. So, if somebody came to the city and wanted to build a project that the council didn't think was appropriate, it's our land. Doesn't happen. You put the affordability overlay on somebody else's property, then you've got almost no discretion in the process, and it will happen. So, you know, again, what I would ask from the council is, what we've clearly heard from the community, they don't care, they don't want the overlay there. So, if you're going to kick it back to staff, please tell us, of the sites, we can pull up the sites, which one are we bringing back with the affordability overlay? That's the issue. And if this plan gets rejected by the state, because we won't know, that site's going to 30 units an acre anyways.
The one that we own, which is what they're talking about?
Yes.
So, what you're saying is, this is the best scenario that we have as a city and staff recommending to the public that this be held the way it is, because we would have more control in it. If we do not do this, then they are subject to God knows what in the future if you take that overlay away.
Yeah, and they're going to be subject to 30 units an acre anyways, because that's what the state wanted to make it originally.
All right, then, okay, I get it, I'm sure they hear it too, but let me ask this. Is there a reason that all of Mike's questions cannot be answered to him in two weeks, along with what you just said, so that they understand how our hands are tied in different situations and put them at ease?
I think Mike has a great grasp on what's happening. I've spoken to Mike. I don't know that the issue is a lack of understanding. I think the issue is the perception of having 28 units, this affordability overlay there. And I think that's really the point of contention, is, you know, we can say all we want up here, it's city-owned property, and we would take any project that is proposed there and apply the site conditions to that project. So, the two examples, up by the dog park is a very different site than this Mobile Home Park, because of where it's at and what's developed around it. We can say that all we want, the affordability overlay is still there. There is a perception that comes with zoning, and I think that's where they're having the concern. So, you know, at the end of the day, they're asking you to remove the affordability overlay from this site and go put it somewhere else. So, if you're going to kick it back to staff, it's not complicated. It's rather simple. They don't want it there, which is fine. I'm not, that's not a criticism. This is in no way meant to be negative towards the community. This is, I understand it, right? This is a tough situation that the state put us in. What city staff is trying to say is, we developed this plan to try to leave those decisions in the hands of the Planning Commission and the City Council. When you start to put this somewhere else, you start to remove that. And so, is it better to have somebody come through the city as us being the property owner? Or is it better to put this on somebody else's property somewhere else? I think that's the policy decision that you guys have to make. So, if you're going to kick it back to staff, you know, I would prefer to pull up the sites and say, where are you wanting us to move this affordability overlay?
Let me ask, if that happens, what happens with that acreage that we own there that was the Mobile Home Park? What would happen to it?
It's still high-density zoning, right? It's still nine units to the acre. So, we still own it. So, somebody could come to us anyways and propose a project there, the same as if this overlay is not there, right?
Right, okay. So, what you're saying is, to try to answer the questions, you feel that we've already answered everything?
I think what the neighborhood is looking for is, they've, obviously Mike demonstrated he had a great understanding of what was going on and what the issues are. You know, their concern is with the overlay and the density that that comes with, right? We're not planning to later go downzone this site. So, you know, does that mean we have to approve a project at that density? No, because we're the property owner. We're in control of that site. But at the end of the day, there is still a perception of 28 units to the acre having the potential there, right? So, and then within our plan, we have to tell the state, because of this decertification issue, where if they decertify our housing element mid-cycle, so let's say we, there's a plan, it's approved by the council, we go submit it to the state, they approve it, say, hey, you've complied with state law, through, if they come in and start reviewing and they feel like we haven't done enough or haven't been working towards the plan, they have the ability to decertify our plan. And then developers would go to the state at a ministerial level, there would be no inclusion of city staff members, Planning Commission, or City Council in the decision on projects. Projects would be approved on some state desk with no review, no consideration of impacts by somebody that doesn't even live here or understand our community. So, you know, the consequences of this are not minor, and, you know, which is why, again, we put flexibility in the plan. That's why it has 2,300 units when we're only required 1,741, is it recognizes within the plan that not every site's going to develop to its full potential per the overlay.
So, Isaiah, what you're really saying then is that we do have their interest at heart in doing what you want to do and what we want to do. That's basically what we're trying to say, if I'm hearing it right, that they are aware of it, and this is what's going to happen if we take that overlay away, Mike, right?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you know, when I say we designed this plan to try to give the Planning Commission and the City Council the most discretion in the process, is because you guys are elected by them, you have their interest in mind. And so, you know, I'm not going to downplay the concern that they've communicated today with, at the end of the day, they can sit there and say, it's got an affordability overlay on it, and it's 28 units per acre, and there's a possibility for a bonus density. I don't like the perception of that, which, you know, I'm glad they came here and said these things. You know, I'm not trying to downplay their concerns. At the end of the day, you know, from a staff perspective, we trust our process more than another one, because of those inherent factors of, you guys are elected by them, you understand our community. Obviously, there were some tough decisions that had to be made within the state law, and there are impacts to it, right? So, at the end of the day, this overlay will exist if this plan is adopted, and the overlay will say you can have up to these densities. Now, we can sit here on the back end all we want and say, hey, we're the property owner and we hear your concerns, but, you know, this process allows us the most discretion when projects come through. That provides only so much, you know, I guess comfort in the process. So, city staff is still saying, we developed this plan today, you know, given our community and the needs of the community and how the process works in Rancho Mirage, to leave it in the hands of the decision-makers. Now, at the end of the day, you're the City Council. You want us to move this overlay? Fine, we'll go move it, just tell us where. So, give us some direction if you're going to table it and say, this is the sites we want you to bring back for consideration. I'm just going to tell you, if you remove it from city-owned land, you remove more involvement from you guys.
I hear you. Let me say one last thing, and then I'll end it. I really feel, and I know we've had this conversation, the city of Rancho Mirage has a cachet, and I'm taking that from our mayor. That's his word. It has a look, and to think that we would, or whoever sits on this council, would try to destroy that and not take into consideration the direction that we are trying to go and continue on with the 92270 zip code and what we stand for, you have to understand. And the reason I brought all this up is for you guys to kind of hear the hit back of what you're asking and what situation we are in. And with, I don't know if I can recognize Mike or not. Isaiah?
Let me make a couple of comments now. I've heard enough concerns, both from the council and our constituents here. Mike, you made a comment, you felt very unusual being on that side of the, you know, the dais. You and I have gone through a lot of battles together on the CV Link. I'm still on that battle, because frankly, if the makeup of this council changes over a period of time, we still face challenges regarding the Butler Abrams Trail. It's still out there. And so, all the time that we're on this dais, we're thinking about the residents. We're thinking about how to maintain the lifestyle that you have achieved and we all share in. Consequently, I also hear my concerns expressed by Richard, who is, you know, the senior member of this City Council, has been there, you know, 130 years. I'm probably short a few years. I hear it from Charlie. And this is something that is critically important. I know that you folks have a lot of confidence in the city. You have a lot of confidence in this council from the standpoint of maintaining your lifestyle. I think a lot of the things that you brought up today, Mike and others, are well worth considering. And as a result, I would make a motion that we put this on hold for, again, it places a burden on staff, and I'm sorry we're doing this to staff, and they've worked so darn hard to get us to this point. But there's enough concern expressed, both by council and our constituents, you, that we take a look at this and come back to council within a timeframe, whether it be two weeks or three weeks, depending upon how long Jeremy needs and his staff to meet with you and come up with a plan that may or may not include this particular parcel. I don't know. It may or may not. But I think that we should give it a period of time, take another look at it, and come back to this council. That being said, I would make a motion to table this and take another look at it within a, you know, two or three-week period. That would be my motion.
So, since this is a public hearing, you need to continue it to a date certain.
All right.
So, our next meeting, Kristy, can you give our next two regularly scheduled council meetings?
Sorry, that's going to be Thursday, February 17th, and then March 3rd.
So, those would be the two dates. You'd have to pick one in your motion to continue it to that date certain. And, you know, the staff is happy to go back and modify the plan as the council desires and happy to meet with the neighborhood. So, you know, maybe after there's a motion and a second, you know, you, the council can kind of, we can bring up the parcels that we've identified, and the council members can say, look at Site A or go look at Site F and give a little bit of direction to staff on what alternative sites you would want us to analyze.
All right. Jeremy, based on those two dates, which of those do you think you're more comfortable with as far as a plan being presented to the council?
The furthest out one.
Yeah. The second date.
So, that was Mark. So that was March 3rd, Christie?
Yeah.
Third.
So, if your motion could include to continue this item to March 3rd, and maybe I'll ask our city attorney, as long as that date is in the motion, do we have any problems with that, Steve?
Uh, no. As long as it's continued to, oh, is it March, did you say March 3rd?
March 3rd, there's another meeting on the 17th? Do we have to have it? Can we skip a meeting?
Oh, no, yeah, we can skip a meeting if we're continuing the public hearing, yes.
Okay, perfect.
You're thinking about the adjournments. Yes, we're fine with continuance.
Okay.
And Isaiah, I would, Ted, I would have seconded that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and, and the day will be March?
3rd.
March 3rd. Table to March 3rd, and hopefully?
Continue, you're continuing.
Continue, I'm sorry.
You're continuing, so, Steve, do you want to give the mayor the language for his motion?
Yeah, so the motion is gonna be continued, the public hearing to March 3rd at 1:00 P.M.
All right.
And, and I believe Councilwoman Smotrich seconded that, correct?
I did, yes.
Okay, so before there's a vote, Jeremy, can you bring up the site list?
Yeah, Josh, can you bring that up real quick, that presentation?
So they're on, the sites are identified on how many different slides, Jeremy? Two?
Three, three different slides.
Okay. So, now we're talking about, all these sites are identified within the housing element as opportunities for affordable housing. What we're specifically talking about is the relocation of the overlay from the Rancho Palms Mobile Home Park to what site? So, right now, that Site D is the mobile home park, so that's where the affordability overlay is. It's also on Site G, and then whatever the site number was for the parcel up by the Dog Park, Site B. So that's the three existing overlays. So we're, we're specifically talking about relocating the overlay from D to one of the other parcels. So that would be A, C, E, and F, and I think there's two more, right, Jeremy? Or is that it?
Yeah.
Isaiah, do we want to limit ourselves as to the parcels that we're looking at, or can we look at the total, total site?
So, this is, these are the inventory of properties that meet the definition for the state, which is why they're identified. So you have to work within these properties. You have to?
Okay, and which ones are owned by the city? Can you go through that again?
Yeah, so, D, which is the mobile home park?
Right.
And then Jeremy, go back to B, which is up by the Dog Park. So B already has the affordability overlay on it, that's owned by the city.
Okay.
Number B.
So, do we have to designate where we want to move at this point?
I would say if a council member wants to, or if the council says, hey, like, go analyze Site A, or go analyze Site E, if there's, or if generally you don't care, and it's just put it anywhere else, one of the considerations that we have to have through this process is, it all can't be in one area of the city, and so, you know, we, so...
Okay, can we designate two places, like, one, which would be very desirable at the, near the high school?
Yeah, so...
And then, one would be on Monterey area near the Dog Park, which would be close to transportation, close to amenities? Can we designate two for the possible overlays?
So we have three sites currently that have the overlay on it. The site that you just referenced, by the Dog Park, already has the overlay on it.
Okay.
So that's, that's B as in boy, it has the overlay on it. Jeremy, go to the next slide. G has the overlay on it, and D has the overlay on it. So we're talking about leaving the other two sites and taking D, which is the mobile home park, and replacing it with, is it A, is it E? Where potentially are we looking at? So from a policy perspective, what sites do the council want to look at?
Well, do we happen to know how many units could be put on, on the area near the Dog Park at this time, or the area near the high school at this time?
So, yeah, we, so take the Dog Park out of your mind, because that's already there.
Okay.
It, it already has the overlay on it, so...
Right. And can, how many units are we planning for over there?
Go ahead.
I'm getting there.
We're...
One second, we'll answer that question for you.
This, the Monterey property is, is assigned 625 units. I'm sorry, five, yes, 625 units.
Okay, so maybe if we think about, you know, investigating the, and having the overlay on the largest property, which would accommodate the most in the shortest period of time, that might be a good way to start.
Ma'am, I would recommend against directing the units to particular properties. As Isaiah indicated, you're responsible for facilitating the process, not, not, not building them or approving projects on, with direction for specific sites.
I don't know if I understand you. I mean, we have to find a developer who, who would come in and wanted to develop...
No, no, ma'am.
That's not the point.
We're not trying to find a developer, and we're not trying to go build a certain number of units. This is overreaching housing element. So, so I, I think what I'm, what we've heard so far is, there is a desire from the council to potentially put the overlay off of Site D, and potentially onto another one of the sites we have identified.
Right.
So, staff will go back and run an analysis on making sure that we still have enough units to meet the state requirement. So, you know, in theory, we could come back with multiple overlay zones if we needed to have the number of units increased, so...
I'd like to just know...
But the most, but the most ideal would be to stick with the city-owned properties.
We already have the overlay on the city properties, ma'am. If Site A is not a city property, and, and Site A, if it had the overlay on it as a private property, could generate 1,008 units with the 28 units to the acre. But that, that would be, that would be a, that would be a private development project that the, that the city would process just like any other private development project.
May I ask a question?
So if I understand this correctly, the answer is, if we want it on a city-owned property,
it's Site D. That's the answer. If we wanted to move from Site D, we need to leave staff open to figure out where to put it.
Yeah, that's the whole point, Steve, that...
Yeah.
This is not our job.
Correct.
This is staff's job now. What we're doing is, we've asked now for this to be tabled, so that staff can do, okay, staff can do their analysis and come back to us with the plan by the given date. So I think we have to turn it over to them. We're not the ones that are selecting the sites, or saying it's done on city land or, or public land. Staff has to come back to us at this point.
I just want to make it, I just want to make it clear that if we change the plan, which obviously you have the right to do, we have to resubmit that to the state, and it could take 90 days to get a response. 60 days to get a response. So if we change the plan, resubmit it to the state, you know, that effectively loses another three months toward meeting our deadlines. So I just want, I want to be clear on that, that you understand that.
What is the ultimate deadline?
If you adopt before February 11th, which was why we brought it to you today, that you do not have what, what is, what occurred with the last batch of housing law occur, which is that you have time to make your zone changes. If we adopt after the 11th of February, we have to complete all of the zone changes by October 15th of this year. So...
Okay. October 15th.
That's, that's for the zoning, ma'am, that's after the housing element is adopted.
Okay, well, can I ask one more question then? You know, on this, in the parcel D, if we at present or had had nine units per acre, and there was 13 acres there, so that's 117 units, and then if you go to 13 acres times 28 units, then it would be 364 units, if my math is correct. But if we went to like 20 units times 13 acres, we'd have 260 units. Is that something that would be acceptable, do we think, by the city, or by the neighbors in that area?
So, so again, the plan already is set up that way, where if you had the affordability overlay on it like it is now...
Right.
Because it's city-owned property, you don't have to approve a project at the density of 28 units per acre. You could consider...
Exactly. But what would we be willing, in, in consideration of that neighborhood, what would we be considering would be acceptable to the City of Rancho Mirage?
Well, again, that would be up to you, because you're the property owner and the council and the Planning Commission. So, without a specific project in front of you, staff can't sit here today and say what is appropriate and what is not. Obviously, given the site conditions, we can all probably say, this isn't going to develop like, say, the area up by the Dog Park. At the end of the day, those decisions would be made by the City Council, because it's city-owned land, so...
Okay, well, then I'm really glad that we're going to be continuing this, and we'll be able to have some discussions with some of the neighbors and the staff, and I think we can come up with some very viable solutions.
Well, that's why we decided to, to table this, and I think we have to turn it over to staff at this point.
Continue it, you're continuing it.
We're continuing it.
I'm sorry. That's why we have to turn it over to staff at this point.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments? We have a, we have a motion and a second.
To continue to March 3rd.
Yep. Do you want to...
Roll call, Christie.
Councilmember Downs?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay. We hope that this accomplishes what you would like, and, again, I think that you know the dedication of the city, you know that we're gonna work hard to come back with something that's acceptable to all parties. So, again, thank you for your effort, thank you for your time, and I think it's consistent with what we've done in the past, from recognizing all of the needs.
Thank you. Thank you.
At this point, we're going to, we're gonna be going into closed session and recess, and I'm gonna ask council to please give us an agenda for closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council at this point is gonna recess into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 549 by 6.91, to discuss existing litigation known as vacation rental owners and neighbors of Rancho Mirage, Rancho Mirage Vacation Rentals LLC versus City of Rancho Mirage. So I'll see you in closed session.
All right, thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
We're in recess.
All right, it's 5:25 P.M., and the City Council took no reportable action in closed session. This meeting is adjourned.